Welcome to the Monday, July 27th, meeting of the City Council. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask that you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Just a note as well about what's going to happen this evening, just so you'll know procedurally. We're going to have about a half an hour to take care of some preliminary matters, some smaller matters, and then at 8:00, we're scheduled to have a joint work session with the school board. After that time, that meeting will end, the joint meeting will end, and then we'll continue our regular meeting. So that's just for your information. You can speak publicly now to any matter in just a moment or two, or you can wait and speak a little bit later on when we rejoin the regular work session later this evening. So with that, why don't we go on and see, are there, why don't we, do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Can we do the roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yes, let's do the roll call, please.
Thank you. Mr. Baruch. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Present.
Mr. Snyder?
Here and present.
Mr. Z.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
A- present.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we move on to the meeting agenda? Do we have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Are there any proclamations tonight, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. It looks like we have one oath of office to a new board and commission member, Mr. Roy Jones, is that right? Mr. Jones present this evening? Hi, welcome. Thank you for your service to the community. Why don't you come on forward and you can be sworn in by the clerk and then we can all introduce ourselves or shake hands with you.
I, Roy Jones III,
Aye, Roy Jones.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform
That I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform, sorry. All the duties
All the duties.
incumbent upon me
Incumbent upon me.
as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals
As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Why don't you come forward and we can shake your hand. It's 10% all smoothies. Thank you very much for your service, we appreciate it. Why don't we now go on to public comments? Are there any written comments, Madam Clerk?
(inaudible).
Is this the only one?
Oh, no, you can do that.
Okay.
I do have written comments. We had a letter from Mr. Kalin before the last work session to say he would provide an analysis outlining his concerns about the RFP, PPEA, for the campus redevelopment project that was presented at the July 20 City Council work session. Allison Kuchma asked, wrote to ask why the campus redevelopment project has to move forward so quickly. Diane Duggan of 102 Lawton Street wrote with concerns about the proposed development at Broad and Washington Street. She is concerned about traffic and parking on her street, sufficient landscape buffering, location of trash dumpsters, and noise during and after construction. Eric Pelton, Vice Chair of the Economic Development Authority, sent detailed comments on the draft RFP for the campus redevelopment project. And Brian Rye wrote to express concern about Fairfax County's delay in approving the Mount Daniel project. He requested that until the situation is resolved that the city's focus be on that project and not on the RFP for campus redevelopment.
Thank you very much. I understand we have a speaker for the annual report for HSCAC, Ms. Vicki Barnes, are you here tonight? Welcome. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. All right. Hi, everybody, how are you? Okay, so I think you all have a copy of my report in advance, so I'll just kind of hit the highlights, and if you have any questions, let me know. Okay, so this year, the Human Services Advisory Council did a number of things. The first thing I'm going to cover is the Community Services Fund grant. This year, the CSF gave grants to, am I loud enough now? Okay, to 10 organizations serving city residents throughout fiscal year 15. Part of that was the Best Buddies, which we served 56 youth without disabilities and 14 with disabilities, and that was at George Mason High School. The Falls Church Community Service Council served 30 families with emergency food, two of those families with furniture. Crisis Link served five of our city residents in their safeguard program. Legal Services in Northern Virginia served 24 low-income households, home search, or home stretch, pardon me, provided three city families with safe home and guiding them to self-sufficiency. The Friends of Falls Church Homeless Shelter provided folks with shelter each day throughout the winter, a total of 12 beds and 42 individuals. The Health Services Agency is providing health care for families, or health care services for facilities planning to ensure adequate access to care, served 42 requests for information, held 19 public hearings. The Falls Church Education Foundation served seven ESOL, or ESOL, students in summer camp. The EER program served four city residents with reading radio services and dial-in, and the Shelter House provided assistance for three household families in the city. So that was fiscal year 15, and in fiscal year 16, we have, we have given 10 proposals for a CSF grants already, so we'll be looking forward to the results of all of those funds that we distributed. On down to, should I pause as I go for questions, or should I just keep going?
Why don't you keep going.
Okay. On down to the Community Services Fund, so this year again, we had a lot more requests than we had funds, so we had $143,594 in requests, and of course, then we only had $75,000 to distribute. Year before last, we actually put some guidelines into place for decision-making for the council so that we would make sure that we're being fair to all the recipients who's requesting the funds, so we did a few things. We made a program overview, so first, we wanted to make sure they met the criteria for the city needs, and we wanted to make sure it wasn't a redundancy or a duplication of services that already existed. We also looked at clear outcomes and the numbers served for all of those folks who were requesting funds and activities appropriate to the actual outcomes. And we talked about impact and barriers as far as measurable outcomes and barriers identified and addressed those as we went as well. We also looked at the budgeting, other funding resources, so, you know, were we trying to fund actual direct services, or were there administrative costs involved? So we looked at those efforts so that we can make a clear and unbiased path for making those approval decisions. Onto the next item, which is aging in place. So the council took a number of steps this year to conduct outreach to the city in May, mostly May of 2014. We hit the streets over the past year in '14 and distributed some flyers in various parts about where most of our senior population is concentrated, or where we think that they might visit. We targeted areas such as the Giant Grocery Store, churches, doctors' offices, the Winter Park Hill neighborhood. Additionally, we sent some information to the Falls Church news press and posted some information at City Hall. So the information that we actually handed out was a flyer that kind of just listed all of the senior services that were not only in the city of Falls Church, but were within close outreach of folks as well, so that they were aware, you know, of what kind of services they could tap into. Next is the student members. Starting in October 2014, we welcomed two of our new student members from George Mason High School, and hopefully, I'm going to pronounce all of their names correctly. Mariana Allen Lewis and Haley Lafterson, I think that's how you pronounce your last name, join us on a monthly basis. So they've been a great addition as far as getting the perspective of the young folks in the community. They've had a lot of really great ideas and jumped in quite well. Rent relief program, so another responsibility, of course, is the final grant amounts for the rent relief program, which we, of course, distributed. We distribute every year that serves our income-eligible, disabled and senior residents. The HSCAC appointees and city human services staff, the past year, we actually lost several members, Christina, David, and Kirsten, or Kristen, pardon me, all left us this past year, so we were, are still searching for new members, but we were able to welcome Anne Norloff in April 2015. Anne's quite the character, she brings a lot of enthusiasm to our team, so we look forward to working with her. And I became the chair in March 2015, so that's a new thing for our committee as well. And other than that, we're just looking for, we need a couple new members so that our committee remains strong. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service to the community. Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
And thank you and the staff for the broad range of good deeds that you do. The Aging in Place initiatives that you mentioned, I wonder, any feedback on the effectiveness of your outreach? That's a pretty impressive outreach effort, and I'm just wondering, you know...
You know, I don't have, there's no feedback that I'm aware of, and I don't think we had any way to collect that kind of data, other than just maybe happenstance of acting, you know, asking people how they got to that service. Some of the agencies that were, or some of the services that were on the flyer may have asked that question, you know, "How did you hear about us?" type of thing, but we did not collect that data.
Okay.
But we did pass out. I know that as I was going through the neighborhoods, especially over in Warner Hill, a lot of people were stopping me along the way, so it was a great chance for me to get my neighbors. At the time, I lived over in Pearson, so, you know, there are a lot of them, people were stopping me and taking extra flyers, so it was, it was a pretty good, pretty good experience, all in all.
Yeah, okay, well, I thank you all for that effort. I think it's good to be out there showing that you care and offering information, even if it isn't picked up on immediately. So you say you're going to be focusing on that as a priority for the coming year, so
Yes, sir.
keep us posted on that.
All right.
Good luck.
All right, will do, thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Any other questions? Yes, is there any particular skill set that you think would benefit the committee at this time?
Um, yeah, so, and I don't know what the official posting says, so I may be speaking out of turn on that, but, in my opinion, as a chair, I mean, someone who's had some experience in human services or social services would definitely be valuable to us, but also maybe some finance background as well, I mean, all the decision-making with the finance stuff, you know, we always want somebody to be able to look at the numbers besides our immediate folks. You know, I think also maybe some project planning might be good as far as the history. You know, we have several projects going throughout the year, so it'd be great to have somebody rally and help us organize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we will thank you again for your wonderful service.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming out this evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Do we have any other reports this evening, or is that it? Okay, so why don't we go on to public comment? I have two speaker slips here now. You're welcome to either speak now, or during the regular session, which will continue after the joint work session. So there won't be an opportunity during the joint work session to speak, but there will at the regular City Council meeting, which will follow immediately after that. You can speak now if you'd like. You can again speak now, or you can speak during the regular hearing, which will be after the joint work session, which will also be on the same subject matter as the joint work session. So we have two speakers. Mr. Kalin, would you like to speak now, or would you like to speak later?
I would prefer to speak later, but...
You can speak later if you'd like.
But how long does the joint committee work?
I don't know the exact time. It's not going to be as long, I sure as heck hope it's not as long as the last one, but, you know, an hour or two, maybe.
I mean, maybe I should go home and take a nap and then...
Maybe we all should.
...return for this. I'm here, Kalin, 429 Park Avenue, discussing the RFP issue. Proceeding with the RFP is premature. First, the Mount Daniel project is far from settled. We know that the delay will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Interest costs alone will be over $300,000. Possible damages for unplanned work stoppages are unknown. Second, we don't know if Mount Daniel will be approved by Fairfax Planning Commission. If it is not, then the GMHS site may need to be reconfigured. The proposed RFP, understandably, but unfortunately, does not take that into account. Third, there has been no review, post-mortem, or analysis of lessons learned from the Mount Daniel debacle. These mistakes will cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. Mistakes at the GMHS site will cost us millions of dollars. The only information we get from the school division is spun so hard that we're beginning to think that the Mount Daniel project area is starting to levitate. Shouldn't we have an independent party paid for by the city look into what happened before we make more commitments? General observations, there's no justification for a two-year timetable. It seems clear that the school board timetable is geared for a 2016 referendum. Once that is decided by the school board, everything required to justify the timing of the referendum was compressed to meeting a self-imposed and unjustifiable short timetable. Mount Daniel is living proof of the risk of ill-informed decision-making. The RFP itself, the RFP appears to be a combination of standard clauses and some school board-adjusted language. On one hand, we are seeking ground lease application, but would accept other possibilities as well. On one hand, we expect to issue a bond for school construction unless we can avoid issuing a bond, which would then relieve the tedious process of justifying a large bond issue. The RFP is for renovation or a new high school, except that the requirements stated appear solely for a new high school. It is clear that the renovation is an afterthought. Here are some questions for the City Council, very short, but just for the City Council, not for the city manager, not for the attorneys present, not for the school board, just for the City Council. Why are we asking the proposer to provide a discussion of interest rates, given market conditions? If they could successfully analyze interest rate movements, they would be working on Wall Street, not doing school construction. What specific financial risk exposures are we looking to mitigate? What does undue financial risks mean? What specific risk metrics are we looking for? Why are we asking the proposer about the expectations regarding receiving general obligation guarantees or moral obligation guarantees? Why don't we just say we will not provide either form? Finally, if the council cannot answer these questions right now, then you are considering a proposal that you do not fully understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalin. Our next speaker, potential speakers, Mr. Lamone, you're welcome to speak now or wait till later, followed by Ms. Kuchma. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Lamone, 304 Great Falls Street, Falls Church, Virginia. Of course, commented on this last week, but I want to follow up on Mr. Kalin's comments. Under the guidelines for the PPEA, the, the City Council seems to cede the primary responsibility to the school system for evaluating this very complex and, and risky project that I, and I pointed out some of the risks last week. It seems, and I would like to ask, well, the city will be providing, will be responsible itself for issuing any bonds and other costs that will be borne in this whole process, not with the school system, all the preparation and analyzing, and analyzing the, the RFP and its results. In what way can, do you as a council justify abdicating your responsibility to the taxpayers, given this the largest and most riskiest project in Falls Church history? I put that question to you in general, but given the Mount Daniel fiasco which has unfolded, particularly this past week, that I, I have to underline that question, and I would appreciate a response.
Thank you. Ms. Kuchma? She's our last speaker, who has filled the speaker slip out. If there's anyone else in the off, the audience who wishes to speak, you're welcome to speak at this time by filling out a speaker slip and giving it to the clerk. Welcome.
Hi, Allison Kuchma, 813 Fulton Avenue. I don't have any prepared remarks. I just wanted to kind of expand on something, a comment that I made online today, and one of the reasons why I'm running for school board is I think communications with integrity is really important. So if you say something and you think that maybe someone thinks something else about what you said, I think it's incumbent on the person who speaks to make sure that they clarify. I mean, you wouldn't want to mislead someone, and so during this whole process, I think communications with integrity is really important, and of course, I've spoken before about the need to slow this process down, but I'm really concerned. I was listening to the school board meeting on July 7th, and Dr. Jones was presenting the, the renovation numbers, and, you know, if you look at that document, it's very clear it's a conceptual estimate. Well, do you think that everybody here knows the difference between a conceptual estimate and a real estimate? I mean, how many, you know, how many people do you think know the difference? And then pretty soon, people drop the word conceptual estimate, and all of a sudden, everyone in town is talking about "the estimate." Well, they're two different things, and so everybody's talking about how there's been an estimate on how much it would cost, and if you listen to Dr. Jones in the school board meeting on July 7th, that's what she says. You know, "The renovation will cost." We don't even know that. And so it's frustrating to see this process going forward with all this information flying around that's not information, what I say, information with integrity. There's a difference, you know, and you read the detail, and some staff member who's has nine years of work experience has put that together. I mean, that could simply mean that he's been out of college for nine years. Maybe he got those numbers off the internet, I don't know. Do you know? I'm just saying that there's a lot of questions, and this is a really big project, and it's really important, and we should take it slow, and, and I'm really uncomfortable that the community thinks that there's been an estimate on how much it would cost to renovate the high school, when there hasn't been. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have an additional speaker, Mr. Doug Guttenkopf. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, thanks, and thanks for letting me come back. I wanted to talk again about taking, taking the 10 acres and using it for retail construction. I don't think it's in the best interest of the student body attending Mary Ellen Middle School and George Mason High School to have a residential building constructed on the now-present football, soccer, lacrosse recreational site. To do so would rob students and others of valuable open space for recreation that offers a serene and secure haven for athletic and community events. The rationale given to explain taking this property is that the construction of a retail entity on 10 acres of now-present campus grounds will generate an abundance of revenue for the city. Monies that might be generated from such a project pale in comparison to benefits experienced by students and community, even though they are of a more abstract nature. Falls Church has two major multimillion-dollar projects in progress currently, with two more at the discussion and planning stages. One of these at the planning stage reportedly could generate $3 million a year in tax revenues for the city. This project, and the others mentioned here, and future projects, suggest an abundant bounty coming to city coffers. The aforementioned facts give credence to the unessential necessity of taking land from the middle and high school campuses. Construction of a building at the eastern perimeter of campus is incongruous with the existing environment. There are no other retail structures in the immediate vicinity. To place a building there is anathema to design integrity. It is out of place. The fact that a new high school is necessary does not mean that Mason has to lose a third of its campus for that to happen. These two issues are not necessarily linked. Either one can happen without the other. Because a retail building can be built does not mean that it should be built. Neighboring high school campuses, which are comparable in size to the downsized 24-acre version envisioned for Falls Church, differ in an important respect. Yorktown at 24 acres, Washington Lee at 25 acres, both Arlington schools, Madison in Vienna at 25 acres, are bounded by low-traffic-load residential streets. They are not impinged, as Falls Church is, with a four-lane major thoroughfare which is growing in congestion. My point here is that the redesign is constrained. Even with a retrofitted campus that includes a new high school, a new football soccer playing area, and an add-on to Mary Ellen Henderson, it is possible that we will go from a comfortable fit that we have now to one that is crowded. One more thought to add to this, to the notion of crowdedness, is the question of whether or not campus will have to sacrifice land on its eastern perimeter for, for through traffic to and from a commercial structure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening. Mr. Shields, are there any other speakers before I ask to speak to Mr. Shields? Any other speakers? Okay. Mr. Shields, I know this is a time we're supposed to go into joint work session, although I don't see the chair or the vice chair of the school board. Are they present in the audience? Are they going to be coming this evening?
Vice chair will be here.
Will be here? Okay. We can wait, would you like to take another item from farther the agenda? Do we wait till he arrives, a couple minutes, or would you recommend going forward?
Under the city manager's report...
Oh, I'm sorry, we still have stormwater, my apologies.
I was going to ask for the council's, if I could deliver the stormwater annual report.
Let's do that.
We think that the actual report itself will be less than five minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Let me just note, the person giving our report today is Jason Widstrom in our Public Works Department. Jason has really been instrumental in the standing up of our stormwater utility, and as the chief civil engineer for the stormwater utility, has both been the principal staff member for the creation of the utility since its beginning, and also for the execution of the projects, including the Stream Bank restoration projects in the city, the stormwater detention projects under the tennis courts, and that Thackeray School. And so tonight, Jason will give our first annual report, and we would like to make this an annual tradition, and in the old days of having a water utility, we did this on an annual basis. It was typically due in December because we would then have the financials in it as well. This year, at the request of, of council, and council member Z in particular asked for this report, so we wanted to produce this and get it to council, and I look forward to presenting it tonight, and any further discussion that we have on it, we could schedule a follow-up meeting if that's desired.
All right, thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I'm pleased to present the 2015 annual report for Stormwater Utility. Tonight, I'll briefly discuss the city's accomplishments for the past year, and then I can answer any questions you may have about the stormwater program. Over the last fiscal year, Public Works Engineering Staff's been busy managing development and working on state-managed programs. and working on state-mandated programs. Notably, we've updated and began implementing the city's new stormwater ordinance, developed an illicit discharge manual and standard operating procedures for emergencies, drafted a Chesapeake Bay TM-Dale action plan, and had our Virginia Stormwater Management Program reauthorized by DEQ for the next five years. In FY15, we issued 39 stormwater permits. Thirty-nine of those went for residential structures, two for commercial sites. And as a result, we've performed over 1,600 individual site visits for erosion and sediment control. Thank you. And we've inspected our streams and 32 outfalls for illicit discharges during our stream walks. And we've also inspected all 20 of the city's stormwater facility management facilities. Meanwhile, our operations crews have been busy inspecting and maintaining the city's infrastructure, ensuring that our system is functioning at maximum capacity to limit flooding. Over the last year, we removed 135 tons of sediment and debris from streams, pipes, and structures. An additional 82 tons was prevented from getting into our stormwater system by street sweeping. Our aging infrastructure required crews to perform numerous spot repairs and reconstruction of storm inlets and pipes. We had over $200,000 in construction costs to repair a failed corrugated metal pipe on Lawton, West Broad, and East Columbia, which is pictured here. These projects fixed reoccurring hazards like sinkholes in the street and improved system capacity. We also saw several major CIP projects come to nearly completion in FY15. First of the slides I have here is Pearson Branch Stream Restoration and Co-Branch Restoration and Daylighting. Both of these were completed, substantially completed in June and provide a stable stream bank, flood capacity for smaller, more frequent storms, and valuable credits towards the Chesapeake Bay TM-DL. We also had Jesse Thackeray Stormwater Improvements going on. And along with that one, you may also have seen the Great Falls and Little Falls Stormwater Projects. Both of these were substantially completed in July of this year. And together, these two projects detain over 150,000 gallons of water in a 10-year storm, which would otherwise have been downstream in areas that we knew of flooding. All of these programs can be credited toward the city's state-mandated Chesapeake Bay TM-DL obligations to remove nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment from stormwater runoff. In FY15, the city was required to develop a TM-DL action plan to outline how we would meet our obligations and our first 5% removal milestone for all the key pollutants by 2018. I'm happy to report that between city projects that I've listed here today and redevelopment over the past few years, we will meet this first five-year, 5% requirement in the first five years. If you want to see more detail on how we're doing this, we're going to make the report available on the city's website. It is in draft format and we'd like to get public comment on that. And we'll keep it up there until we have to submit it to DEQ on October 1st of this year as part of our MS4 Annual Report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Conley?
Thank you very much. The new Howard Herman Park is just lovely. Wonderful place to walk. There are always people there, dogs, and bikes, and kids. So thank you for that. I think that's a really good project. I just have a question about, we had such a rainy June and July, and now that these projects are done, did you notice, was there a noticeable lack of flooding in Falls Church because of these projects? Was that tracked at all?
So I did reach out to the residents downstream of the City Hall project and I think that it was a little bit too early or maybe the storms were, it wasn't online.
Right.
So it is something that we're paying attention to. I do think that the water that we saw on a few occasions was quite substantial beyond the design capacity of some of our stormwater infrastructure, but definitely the erosion that we've seen on the different sites has been better. So I think time will tell.
Okay. I think this is a really good news story that you're spending money on real projects. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. I enjoyed your report. A couple of things about the financial, if you could just walk me through to help explain. So on page seven, it states the stormwater budget for maintenance in FY16 is a little less than $200,000. Staff recommends this budget be expanded to $1 million in order to fully address the city's maintenance needs. So that's obviously a substantial gap between what we're able to do now and what we would ideally like to do. And I'm just wanting to square that within the information on page nine, which says that we are, we thought that we were going to have a much larger obligation over the long term by FY28 for certain aspects of the system, but in fact, happily, you say, it appears that our obligation is going to be significantly less. Can you just speak a little bit to that?
Sure. The section on page seven is more about our operating budget. And so right now, our operating budget is handling the main pipe replacement and repair work that we have going on. If you look at, well, what I was highlighting there is if you see the picture that I presented as well, is that we had three projects this year and we spent a little over $200,000 just to do that type of operational work. We have a greater need than that. If I had additional funds, then we would be more proactive in trying to get some of these before they become emergency repairs, like you see in the picture on East Columbia. And we want to do that because it costs, the cost is a little cheaper instead of, you know, having to really rush into it. So that's where the 100,000, or sorry, the 1 million comes from, is we feel like the operational maintenance needs to fulfill where we are with what we have in the ground, that would be the right amount. What I'm getting towards on page nine with the savings, this is more about capital. And so we're looking at the larger infrastructure flooding problems. And so this isn't 100-foot of linear, 100 linear feet of pipe that we're doing a replacement on. These are the large detention systems and the Chesapeake Bay TM-DL-type things. If we wanted to move all of our maintenance into capital, I provided those cost analysis on page eight and based on what we know about our system through closed circuit television of what we do have. So we've indexed, I believe, 50% roughly. And so based on those numbers and the condition analysis, we projected out some numbers for cost.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's helpful. So one of the impetus for passing the stormwater fee was we feared some sort of sanctions from the EPA might come down upon us if we didn't meet federal standards. Is it accurate to say the information on page nine suggests that because of the recalculation, at least on the Chesapeake Bay TM-DL element, that, you know, we're doing okay? We do have issues in terms of the equipment, I mean, of the pipes and so forth you need to work on, but we are not, compared to everybody else in the world, in any way deficient or lagging. Is that right?
Yeah, I would say that's correct. The city benefited because it has been largely built out for a while that through redevelopment that we've been requiring reductions in key pollutants for the last six or seven years with a very strict standard. And we've reaped the benefits of those. And originally, that wasn't thought to, been available to us. Back when we were discussing the utility in 2012, that wasn't on our radar. The state made a decision, because a lot of localities made a fuss about it, that this is important. It's not in the Bay model. It should be, rightly so. And so we got credit all the way back to 2009. So BJ's Wholesale, Good Fortune, the Flower Building, a bunch of these larger developments had great rewards for the city in terms of pollutant reduction. And so we've gotten those benefits along with our stream restoration projects, which are really terrific for sediment. We've met our first 5% in the first five years through those projects. And I think overall, as we see this whole thing unfold, that we're going to be in a better place than we thought back in 2012.
Great. Okay. Well, let's hear it from localities making a fuss. The only other thing I wanted to bring up just to note for the public's benefit, you obviously, as you phrase here in the report, heard a good bit about whether gravel driveways are pervious or not. And it's, I recommend anybody who had an issue, and we have heard people come to us with that concern, just read what's here. I won't repeat it. But essentially, we and most everybody else appear to classify gravel driveways as impervious. And if that doesn't make you happy, then I guess you're just not going to be happy because that's the way it's going to be. And also, the credit program has, you know, drawn a lot of interest, curiosity, some degree of participation, but it is important to underscore that it's not really enough to retire any significant portion of your obligation. I mean, it's something that's good to do, important to do, but you're probably not going to do it for financial reasons if you're a homeowner. Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I asked for this report and with the support of council is that there's a lot of interest in the region on what Falls Church has managed to do. Our little city is apparently in a preeminent position in all those areas that characterize as MS4 areas, which basically means you have to do something and you have to be at 40% by 2023, and you have to be at 100% with respect to meeting requirements by 2028. All this sounds pretty dry. It also sounds like an owner's burden for those that pay a lot of taxes, and this is viewed upon as yet another tax. So here it is. We have to do something. And this is really a good something that we're doing. When I returned from Richmond last week, participant on behalf of the city in their environmental quality subcommittee of the Virginia Municipal League, there were those that had just begun the process and they were wondering whether there were jurisdictions that had done more that could inform their efforts, could help them out perhaps, because quite frankly, they didn't have the resources or even the first inkling of how to proceed along this path. And I'm also reminded that we heard an impassioned plea from the city of Norfolk that it'll be under six feet of water in 10 years. Six feet of water in 10 years. 80% of contribution comes from stormwater runoff as we increase in amount of hardscape in the United States, and they're not doing anything about it. If they're looking for it, $1 billion just to study the problem. So whatever it is they're doing, this is a good thing. And I thank you for your work.
Okay. Other comments? Well, Ms. Oliver and then Mr. Baruch.
Sorry. Just a question of clarification. Mr. Widstrom, the map on page one, what's the date of that map? You refer in the paragraph to a study in 2007 and another study in 2011?
Yes. The mapping shown there is created mostly from video that was taken in 2006 and 2007.
So this is a pretty old map?
That's correct.
Okay. If you publish this report, could you please footnote the date of it? And when do we expect to have a more comprehensive report after the winter pipe inspections?
So the city has about 30 miles of stormpipe. In the last year, we roughly videoed one mile of that because we've been busy doing the other operational things. And so we're putting together a systematic program to, over several years, go back through and index all of the piping based on material and proximity to the streets. So it's kind of a risk-based analysis.
Okay. And as projects are completed, are we updating this map?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Baruch?
Jason, I just wanted to thank you and the team for bringing this forward. You know, we talked about at length about how we wanted to handle stormwater moving forward, and it's great to see that this is, I think, the first report that we've received since we put the credits in place and the system in place. I think it's probably the most equitable way we could have come at it. And I think to Mr. Z's point, it's probably one of the few jurisdictions, at least locally in the Northern Virginia region, if I'm not mistaken, that's kind of gone the route of, you know, user fees based on the amount of impervious surfaces we have, which I think is the most equitable way of doing it, rather than it being tied to property value, et cetera, which doesn't really factor in of how much impervious surface there may be on a particular property. So I'm glad to see that this has come forward. It sounds like there's a couple of areas that more work, streamlining is needed, but I think that's to be expected. So, you know, looking at the report about how the credits have worked, it sounds like it's been complicated, to say the least, both for our citizens and businesses, et cetera, and also for staff. So I look forward to hearing more about that in the future in ways that we can make that a little bit easier, and I commend you for the work. And if there's a way of, also, I think there was a lot of work that went into this. So to Mr. Z's point, I certainly support the city's efforts of, one, you know, helping other jurisdictions with this, to the extent that we have the bandwidth to do that, but also I think, you know, as it goes, you know, I was recently at a panel that I'll talk later about, about local government issues, and this is sort of what local government's all about, is infrastructure that's below the ground, that's not necessarily sexy but really important for what cities do. And there's a lot of trends that this is a neglected area, but it's certainly not neglected in Falls Church. I think we have a commitment to fixing some of our infrastructure, and this goes a long way. So I think the, you know, the more we can get this out to the public at large, I think the better off. Our jurisdiction is going to be in other jurisdictions that are going to be heeding this message sooner or later. Thank you.
Thanks. I've got a few fairly quick comments, questions. One, I noticed on page nine, it looks like there is an approximate $4.5 million savings due to possibly a new interpretation of some of the rules and the city's requirements to comply with them. Is that right? So it looks like $4.5 million less than anticipated by year 2028?
Actually, the savings would be 7.5 million. The original estimate was 12 million. So we believe it to be about 30% of the original cost.
Okay. So 7.5 million. And what are your anticipated implications of that? In other words, I mean, to me, I think if we got any savings, we ought to pass them on to the customers, the taxpayers. And this is essentially a tax, I think, in a lot of folks' minds. Are we anticipating reducing the rates to compensate for reduced costs?
Well, the original, well, the rate at $18 didn't, wasn't adequate for the longer-term funding for that TM-DL.
And so what should, what did you believe the rate should have been?
I don't recall from back in the discussion, but it was substantially higher.
Yeah, I think the rate started at 42 and then we chopped it back. But that was, I think at that time, in an original budget, we were assuming 15 million of capital cost to comply with the federal mandates. But I do think that it's good news that, and a lot of it's come about through redevelopment, that with the redevelopment that we've had in the city, we've met higher targets for pollution discharge. And so that's the good news. I think the bad news on the cost side is that just the rate itself will have pressure on it in the future. And we'll be able to, I think, at budget time, be able to look at these things in detail every budget year, and the council can make the decision on the rate each year. But what the balance will be is the pace at which we make the infrastructure improvements, fix the old broken pipes. And I think that that's a cost that I think probably is understated in real terms- And I think that that's a cost that I think probably is understated in real terms in the rate today. But we're very cognizant of the fact that the council has a lot of competing priorities that come to you every year at budget time, and so no one gets everything that they ask for, and I think the same is true for stormwater.
Okay, I think, I look forward to that discussion at the right time to figure out kind of how these competing needs work, but I'm glad to hear there's some savings. What is your staffing? Is it as anticipated when we first started this program? In other words, the total number of FTEs?
Yes.
What is that number?
Well, we've shared some individuals across, I'd have to look back and get that information for you because they're shared across funds, but we can certainly, it was in the budget, I know that.
Okay. Well, I tell you, I mean, to me, I guess I just want to make sure that the plan is proceeding as we contemplated it to proceed, and it looks like you're doing some good work. That's fantastic news for a lot of folks, so I applaud you for that. But I also just want to make sure we're coming out of the box with this new program in some ways, and I want to make sure that it's being implemented in the way that it was contemplated to be implemented, and that very well may be the case, but that's the reason for the question. Any implications for next year's rates? Have you started to spend time on that, or is that something, a discussion we'll have later in the year?
Later in the year.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, listen, that's all I've got. I know, oh, Mr. Zee's got another comment.
So I just want to invite the public to look at your new parks, your new streambeds, the new wetlands. I understand from Rexon Parks that we actually have an eight-point buck that's down there walking around. There's a family of ducks that has taken to accommodating themselves to the dogs that splash through the waters. It's, these are your parks. We took out some pipes and culverts and made it into a thing of beauty. So go ahead and walk them.
Mr. Duncan?
Just one more thing. The process of applying for a credit, you say on page 18, "A more simple process could incentivize further participation in the credit program, and a review of program documents may be considered." I would encourage whatever review would be necessary to simplify the process, as long as we're obviously meeting the objectives of it. And then you also say, "Staff's time to track recertification," which was contemplated to be annual, "was substantial and may necessitate an evaluation of the renewal cycle," which means let's just not do it so often. So as we head into next year's budget, I would encourage the deployment of staff to keep that in mind, and maybe certification doesn't have to be quite as often. Finally, the mention of development and its impact. On page 13 there, you say that two projects that are really high-ranking on our needs, 100 Block West Broad and flooding on Douglas Avenue, we've basically just taken those down off of our, we're going to be able to do something about that because of what you explain here. There's just not enough city-controlled land to do what we need to do to manage the situation. And you say that as properties redevelop within these areas and others, city staff will be requesting developers reduce impervious coverage, providing extra storage capacity as part of their stormwater management. I think it's helpful for people to understand that a lot of times when new development occurs, it actually can improve the stormwater runoff situation for just the reasons that you say in this report, because it's the private sector that can be brought in to, you know, do things with their resources and the land they control that the city cannot do by itself. Okay, unless there's any other comments, we'll thank you again for your fine work and your hard work. Much appreciated. Are there any council requests before we break for our joint work session? Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break? You're going to have to move the microphones down and the like, all right? So why don't we just take a short break, and we'll reconvene in a joint work session with the school board in five minutes or so. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay, and you'll have an opportunity to make additional public comments, should you choose during our regular session after the joint work session. Thank you very much. Okay, should, could we go ahead and get started, everyone? Thank you. Welcome to the joint work session portion of our meeting this evening. We're delighted to have our school board friends with us here today. It occurred to me, John, that maybe we could start with, Mr. Shields going through the changes that have been made to the document for the benefit of ourselves and the public, the latest changes that were made. That'd be okay with you?
Yeah, that'd be fine. First, we have the one procedural thing we have to get cleared up. Mr. Castillo has notified the board that he is unable to attend the meeting tonight due to an emergency, due to a personal matter, and he has identified with specificity the nature of the personal matter being a trip scheduled prior to the scheduling of this special meeting. And in accordance with Board Policy 2.23, given that a quorum of the board is physically assembled here, he requests permission to participate via telephone from a location that is not open to the public. So what I need is a motion to allow him to approve to participate remotely.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, great. Sure, sure, welcome, Justin. Mr. Shields, are you ready to go through the document? I've also asked him to provide some hard copies for those of us who don't happen to have a hard copy to take notes on. Those will be coming shortly. But in the meantime, why don't you go ahead and get started and take us through the changes that were made based on our last joint work session?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and I'll be happy to do that. We are, we do have copies on the way down, and in the meantime, I'll just have the track changes version up on the wall. So from the work session discussion last week, where we had a really long and detailed discussion about the RFP, significant changes were made, and some of the areas were in terms of the overall emphasis on the commercial program, what the purpose of the commercial program was for. Those were addressed, and I'll discuss that. There are questions about the referendum requirement, questions about public input and how it fits into this process, and I'll talk about that last. But let's just dive into the document itself. Let me set the, about. So what council and school board have in their packet is the clean copy. I think emailed out was the track changes version. But so in the introduction, there was discussion about the emphasis right off the bat, and so changes were made to describe that the redevelopment, commercialization of a portion of the school campus to generate revenue, to help fund the capital cost of the new and expanded school facilities, create a sense of place, and bring desirable commercial activity and amenities to the city. Also in the introduction area, there's the comment that it read as if the purpose of the commercial development was solely to fund the school facilities, and the intent was to expand that, to note that it was to spur further economic development. But again, those are just in the introductory, which are very sort of summary treatment of what the goals and purposes of the RFP are. At 2.1, project overview, the, there's a notation that the school board and the city wish to permit development of up to 10.38 acres of the parcels and use the short and long-term proceeds of the development to, A, help fund the replacement of the high school and expansion of the middle school and spur further economic development. In section 2.2, the replace or renovate the existing George Mason High School was added. That had already been added to the project scope of work, but it's noted here in the project goals as well. And then again, in paragraph C, 2.2C, the notation of spurring further economic development. So the project scope of work is where some of the most significant changes were. The, in terms of the wording for both Mary Ellen Henderson and the George Mason High School, the language was changed from must accommodate X number of students to here, the new high school is expected to accommodate 1,500 students, and then at the Mary Ellen Henderson section, the expansion is expected to accommodate an additional 400 students. Under redevelopment of a portion of the parcels, there's a good deal of comment and discussion on this section. It's been, a lot of the concepts in the first draft are kept here, but it's essentially rewritten. And the three bullets are trying to concentrate on three things. One, the land transaction, maximizing financial value from the land transaction. Two, maximizing the long-term tax yield, which is characterized as the net fiscal impact. And then three, concerns with design. So I'll just read the section as it's, as it is right now. Redevelop up to 10.38 acres of the parcels for commercial or a mix of uses in a manner that, one, maximizes the financial value of the property to the city and the school board. Note, the city and school board prefer to retain simple ownership of the property through a structure such as a long-term ground lease, but will consider other land transaction structures. Two, maximizes the net fiscal impact to the city through high-quality commercial uses. Note, for these purposes, the net fiscal impact is the projected tax yield minus the projected cost for the city and Falls Church City Public School services once the redevelopment is completed. And three, features outstanding design, including exemplary architecture, pedestrian-friendly streets, lively public and commercial spaces with a sense of place, environmentally sustainable buildings and infrastructure and other enhancements to the parcels that will benefit the city and surrounding community. So that's the rewording of that section. We do, we kept in the language that the city will consider redevelopment that requires rezoning and the creation of a new zoning district. Then I'll skim ahead to the next area of change. 3.2, the schedule. So the discussion at the work session was that it might not be just a bond referendum, it could be a referendum for some other purposes. And so we struck the reference to bond, and then put in instead a public referendum, and that's the only change to that section. The schedule, though, changes the word bond and replaces the word public as well. And then under public comment and conduct public hearings, that's just notes the public hearing and it, on the detailed proposals. And I'll talk a little bit more about public input and the process in just a moment. The evaluation team, the evaluation team has not yet been appointed, so that was put into the future tense. In section 4.5, qualifications and experience, we've, through the scope of work now, the emphasis really is on commercial real estate development, and so we struck the reference to and/or mixed-use real estate development. Under project characteristics, we ask for, under 4.6B, A, to identify and fully describe any work that we, the school board, or the city, or any public entity would need to do, and we also ask for the timing of when that work would need to be done. We add a section K here as well, which is to identify and describe any involvement in project development on the part of any owners or tenants of adjacent properties. I will note that the adjacent property owners have received a draft of this RFP draft, so they are informed that the discussion is happening. We have not received any comment from them on it. And I'm almost done, but I will note the, this is a technical section in 5.1 relating to the fact that for the purposes of this RFP only, the section 5.0 supersedes the provisions of section 8 of the guidelines with respect to the evaluation of conceptual proposals. And that was put in at the advice of legal counsel. And project characteristics, we added in the renovation of the high school and middle s, and so that change is made here. And then under paragraph C, the language tracks now the scope of work, which I read earlier. I won't read it again, but that language essentially mirrors that earlier language. And I think those are the significant changes. The, in terms of public involvement, the, you know, one of the aspects of the PPEA and proceeding along this route of procurement, back in the 19, back when the General Assembly approved the PPEA, a lot of the context was to allow public sector entities to be able to do business more like the private sector does, in a more streamlined fashion, with the idea that the public sector could try to capture some of the benefits that the private sector often gets when the private sector conducts projects. And so that is really very much part of the PPEA process. And so that's, that's one aspect of how this process, in terms of how it would proceed under the PPEA Act. A key concept is that the proposers are engaged in a competitive process, and that competitive process is what creates value for the public entity. And so for the proposers to have confidence in that process, they will want to keep their trade secrets, they want to keep their ideas, their proposals confidential, so that their competitors can't incorporate those ideas into the second phase, the more detailed phase proposal. So particularly for this phase one conceptual step in the process, there is an emphasis on keeping the confidentiality of a lot of the, sort of the substance of the proposals that come before us. The executive summary will be public, the team, the qualifications of the team, and all the entities associated with a proposal would be public, and their cover letter would be public. But that typically, as we know from the unsolicited proposal, is all that's disclosed in this phase one of this procurement process. We have researched the matter of the involvement of other bodies in the deliberative process when the school board and the city council goes in to hear the evaluation team's analysis of the projects, that other bodies, such as the Planning Commission or the Economic Development Authority, could be brought into those closed sessions to hear that information with you, and so that, A, they're informed, and B, so that the council can get, gauge some of the reaction of those, of those bodies. However, that information, anybody's brought into those closed sessions, the basic principle would hold is that the information needs to be kept confidential to guard the integrity of the procurement process. In phase two, if we take that step, there would be a short list of proposers, and we'd ask for detailed proposals. And at that, as we're evaluating those proposals, there is a public hearing process, and we will work with legal counsel, outside legal counsel, within the bounds of the PPA. I think there's been no question that the direction to us from our elected bodies is that you want as much public involvement as possible. And so we will continue with legal counsel to try to make that happen. What is typically done is there's a public hearing in the phase two before the decision is made on your top-ranked respondent. And then there would be a period of entering into a negotiated comprehensive agreement. And once that comprehensive agreement is agreed to, and it might be agreed to on an interim basis, contingent upon the voters' approval at a public referendum the following fall. But once that comprehensive agreement, even if it's an interim agreement, we believe would then be made fully public, and all the details of the proposal would be public, and the voters would know very clearly those details before they cast their vote and became ultimately the deciders as to whether the project proceeds or not. So that is the method that we believe fits the PPA, and that's the advice we've been given on, on how the public aspects of this would be handled. So that's a summary of the changes and the discussion up to this point, and we know there's probably more questions, and we'd be happy to take those and respond as best we can.
Might I suggest maybe we start with any unresolved questions for staff, and then maybe go through the document, see if anyone has any additional comments on the changes that were made? That's a starting point. Does that sound good, John? Okay. Mr. Baruch?
So I had a couple preliminary questions that I had raised before that I think some members of the council also shared. One involved outreach to other stakeholders, VDOT, et cetera. So I'd like to get a better understanding from staff of how we're sketching that out, and if anything on that front has been done. um, and if anything on that front has been done, and I know it's short fuse in the last week. And then two, I'd raise the issue of, um, we go forward with the RFP, but what are we going to measure it against, and how are we going to do that specifically, other than what's been, um, done so far? So I, if we can get a read out of that. And then I've got some further specific comments about the RFP and the edits.
The, um, outreach, um, a, a copy of the draft RFP has been sent to, um, UVA, Virginia Tech, Womata, um, to Supervisor Faust's office, and to, uh, VDOT. And so that's, uh, that's who we've, we've reached out to. And each of those parties, we've been engaged, you know, really, starting 18 months ago, to let them know about, when we were just doing the plan for planning, uh, brought them into the process. We have not received any comments on the RFP itself, um, but we've tried to make it very clear that if there are any questions or comments, um, to, to contact us.
And when did that go out?
Um, the, uh, the RFP itself was sent out either on Friday or today.
Great. And, and they knew that we were going to be discussing it today? Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, and one, one note with VDOT, um, you know, we will, um, our past experience with VDOT is they would like to have actual plans before them, before they really spend a lot of time with us. But we do want to sit down with them just to get, try to do some advanced outreach to them. And, and that would not be their, anyway, well, that's underway.
And we're encouraging that in the document from the proposers as well, whoever they may be?
I think typically the proposer, proposers would have their own transportation consultants, and they would probably rely on them before going directly to, to VDOT.
And then as far as developing metrics, or some measures to, uh, evaluate these things, and that's, that's our own work without hiring, you know, mega consultants to give us the same thing that we're asking the marketplace.
So we will have, um, on our team, we'll have the owner's rep for the, for the schools, we'll have our financial advisor, uh, Davenport, um, we will have our outside legal counsel. We are also, um, believe we will need to have real estate transactional assistance, and that piece of our team is not, um, uh, decided upon yet, and so we'll come back to the council and school board on, on that piece of it. Those are some of the, the key members of the team that will help with the evaluation. The evaluation, though, is driven by the section that's in the RFP, the section 5.5, the evaluation criteria. And, uh, and so that would be the foundation of how the evaluation would be run.
Have involved anybody who understands sort of the marketplace or what can be done on that site as well?
I'm sorry?
Of what can be done on the site and the marketplace?
Well, the, the real estate, um, advisor would, would be our, and-
So that the, the real estate advisor is not simply a transactional person? It's somebody who's a broker or in the development field somehow that could advise us on that?
If value is driven by uses and density, and so, you know, the valuation, what, what we will want then is, given proposers' uses and density, we'll want some truth testing as to whether their value is appropriate for what they're proposing. And, uh, and I think that's the professional assistance that we would have in hand.
Will they also be able to truth test things like, well, no, office building can't be done, or hotel can't be done, or X can't be done?
Well, uh, the, um, I think there, there's going to be some real testing of assumptions with the proposers. I think we will, you know, spend time with them to really test their assumptions. And, um, and through the combination of, of, uh, our expert team and what they're proposing, I think we'll just have to make judgments as to the feasibility of what the proposers are proposing.
And the city and, and the schools still maintain the ability to reject all the proposals for whatever reason, even if they meet the criteria?
Yes.
Carol, is that a yes from?
Yes. That's, it's, I think, uh, the language in the RFP is very clear that we could reject all the proposals at any time.
At any time, okay. And for whatever reason?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, staff? Anyone else? Should we get into the document then? All right, why don't we go, Mr. Shields, why don't you go to the beginning of the document? We'll just scroll through it quickly, and maybe we can stop on any, whenever someone has a comment. Do you have a second? Mr. Buruk? Do you have a comment before we get started?
I've already said these to Wyatt earlier today, but, um, I appreciate the changes that were made about, uh, just clarifying what we're talking about when we're talking about the high school, that it includes the possibility for, uh, um, renovation rather than build a new. But it's sort of missing in the actual resolution itself in the motion. Or the motion actually has it, the draft motion, but the title's kind of missing that concept. So, because it keeps talking about a new George Mason. So that, that's one change we might want to make. Yeah. Optics, what we talked about earlier, sort of jumped out at me is the first thing that I noticed the stock in, and that's where my eyes went. What's the title of this thing that we're dealing with? Even though I'm not acting as the lawyer, I just can't help myself sometimes.
We never noticed that.
Never notice, I've nev-, it's never gotten into legal, I have to say. It's always been top level. And that shows up sort of throughout the document. I think I pointed some of those areas out to Wyatt, but I'm not going to like-
I will just say this, and this is probably a school question, uh, but in going through the document, we went through dozens of places and changed out where it just said new and added renovate as well. But we didn't, we were mindful of the fact that in the scope of work, new high school is defined as either renovated or build new. And so we didn't change it everywhere, uh, partly just because it, it started to get cumbersome. But, you know, in terms of how the, the school board and the city council want to communicate this, if there are other places to change it, uh, we can do that.
Mr. Vice Chair?
And I, I don't know if our resolutions are the same or have to be the same, but I had the same reaction, and one thing I sent in to, uh, this morning was to say, add renovate to ours. And also, um, our resolution still said it, that the point of it was just to generate revenue. And I, I'm going to propose language that says, and to create a great place for the community, because that's something else that we very much said needed to be in there. But again, it's, it's simply making things consistent, not a new idea.
You know, not to, uh, meddle in your affairs, I wonder if you might want to use the same language that's in the RFP about a sense of place and whatever else, the, the same lingo and jargon in your motion that's actually used in the RFP might be good for consistency's sake.
Any consistencies, good.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. I note in the proposed, um, motion on page, uh, four, line 132, we talk about a public referendum, quote, "if needed," end quote. And furthermore, on page, um-
Mr. Snyder, are you in the resolution or in the RFP?
Starting with the resolution, and then I'm going to go to the RFP. Might as well take this issue, just bring it all together. And then the footnote on page six of the RFP, um, I note that, um, on that same page, we talk about a public referendum, and then footnote six seems to suggest that may not happen. So I think that it's very important that we make clear that we're going to have a public referendum. So that means a change to the motion to delete "if needed" on line 132, and it means deleting that footnote, which casts a real doubt as to whether we're going to do a referendum or not. So those might be my suggestions on that issue.
Some, maybe I could suggest this. I think it's a good point, um, that you've raised, but maybe as an, in an effort to get through the document, should we just go chronologically through the document and then take all the changes? Otherwise, I think we wind up jumping around through the document. Let's, why don't we hold that thought? I think it's a good one. Um, but maybe we could just start with the beginning and just roll through. Do we, did we hit a point of contention or a change? And then maybe hold that for a bit. So, Mr. Shields, where are we in the document? Is this the first? Does anyone have any comments up? I guess, I would just say stop.
At the introduction, so here's where we are.
Yeah, so those are changes that were made based on our extensive discussion last week. Does that work for folks, the introductory language? Okay. Do we want to keep on going then, Mr. Shields?
Okay. Um, and then romanet two, the addition of, um, spur, further economic development.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. Because you want to, do you have a comment?
I think we need a moment to clarify.
Sure, okay.
Are we starting through the RFP? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we okay then? I guess we're on, um, section two. Are there any changes or requested changes to this portion of the document? Okay.
All right. Um, then, uh, section 2.2, uh, we have the renovation in A, and then in C, uh, new romanet two spur further economic development.
Okay, any comments? Okay, why don't we keep going?
Uh, the scope of work must switch to what is expected to.
Okay.
And then section C.
Could I ask a question about that?
Sure, of course.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to know, from the schools folks, uh, what is the projection for when we reach capacity on those numbers that we cite there? Is it a 10-year out, 15-year out? Any back-of-the-envelope guess at when we get to 1,500 and 1,000?
We do have projections that are based solely off Weldon Cooper, and at 2029, with no economic development, we are already at 1,200. And then when you take the economic development from Lincoln, Rushmark, and anything else that would be coming online, um, those numbers get added in, and we have about another four or five years, depending on how quickly that growth takes off. But 2029, we're already at 1,200 just from natural growth. And you have to also have a little bit of extra cushion in a building as well.
That's for the high, you're talking for the high school, right?
Yes, that's the high school.
Okay, so, 2029, not including Lincoln and Rushmark? If it includes Lincoln and Rushmark, you get to capacity sooner, or, I mean, we're doing Lincoln and Rushmark, right? I mean, we know those are going to open, that's not-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of the question.
We know Lincoln and Rushmark are going to come online. We don't know exactly how many kids, but we've got estimates that help us give some ideas. So you're saying it'll be 2025, maybe, if Lincoln and Rushmark come in at the numbers that we expect, when you would hit-
You still have that 2029 number, it's just instead of 1,200, it starts to creep up larger. And I don't have it in front of me right now, but I can certainly, um, pull it up.
Okay, so, anyway, 2029, right now, we're in 2015, so, safe to say that-
So the building opens in 19-
Safe to say that the building opens and is good for at least 10 years, uh, with the capacity that we envision, and probably much longer.
Yes.
Okay.
If I could follow up on that question, what rate of growth does that assume?
4%.
4%. So you anticipate for the next, I don't know how many years that was, 10 to 15 years of 4% annual increase in high school population? I presume general school population as well?
That's correct. And when you actually look at the numbers going forward, um, it's very similar to how we looked, um, going backwards. And Hunter and I have ran all of those numbers based off just community questions that we've had in the last couple of weeks. It does sound like a lot of children, but we are growing.
Okay. Unless there are any other questions, why don't we focus on this section C on the screen right now? Does anyone have any comments about this language? Mr. Snyder?
I have one quick, uh, comment, and I think it's consistent with the changes that have been made. In that first, uh, unnumbered, uh, line, it says, "redevelop up to 10.38 acres of the parcels for commercial or a mix of uses," and I would urge the addition of that are predominantly commercial in a manner that. So it allows the possibility of residential, but it really pushes hard toward commercial and a mix of commercial uses.
Okay, so, um- I hope people understood the comment. Are there any comments to the comment? So again, it would be language, uh, which I think after the word "mix of uses," which are predominantly commercial, that would be the addition?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. C?
Thank you, Mayor. I oppose that inclusion. I think we have enough references to commercial here. Uh, and in fact, the title says, "commercial development." Um, I don't know why we need to gild the lily, and there's a point here where I think we're just being senselessly redundant, you know? And when you put in predominantly commercial, it just, I think, makes all of us, uh, look incompetent, that we're saying it one more time in another place, when we know that the landscape currently, with regard to office buildings, is that people don't want to work in them, um, because there's no place for them to go after work. Those places go dark after 5:30. And in fact, there's a movement and conversions for office buildings to be turned into residential schools and churches. So I don't know why we want to be on record saying we want more of that. I think at the very least, it makes us seem as if we don't know what we're doing.
Other, uh, comments? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Different ways you could do this, but when we, when you insert "mix of uses," you're pointing toward the possibility of more of the same kind of commercial on one story, residential on the rest, and I want to stay away from that. Um, I certainly take your view that, you know, there may or may not be office uses, um, and we may need some residential there, but I, when we added the, or a mix of uses, it seems to me we're inviting the kind of so-called mixed use that we've had in the past. And I think that partly why we need a new school is exactly that, development. Now, we may need some of it, but I want to, I want to emphasize that we're not opening the door to that particular model.
Other comments? Ms. Kearney?
I would say that I agree with, with Dan Z. I think we're making it quite clear here in item number one, that we're looking to maximize financial value of the property to the city, and in two, to maximize the net fiscal impact. Um, you know, developers, this is their business, and they're pretty smart about it. And what we want, I think, in this phase is for them to bring us an indication of what the best and highest use of the property is, as long as it complies with number three, which is, you know, a good place. Um, I think we see what comes in the first phase, and based on that, we'll develop the detailed RFP, and we may decide to do some things differently there, but my hope had been that this RFP would be as open as we could make it, so we would get a true sense of what the best and highest use is for the property based on the marketplace.
Other comments? I have to say, I don't, um, uh, object to Mr. Snyder's language. I would hope that we would, I understand the concerns of others, um, and I don't think we want a place that's going to be dead at night, where there's no activity on weekends or nights. But I am concerned that, um, multifamily residential may, um, be the predominance of what we receive, because that's, right today, the most financially lucrative thing in the marketplace. And I think we need to have a long-term vision for this, which has a mix of uses, um, that includes hotels, hopefully some office, strong retail component. So I do have, I, I do share, um, some of that concern. Um, I also have a minor comment to little three here. I don't know if this is the right time or not. It says, um, pedestrian-friendly streets. I might add pedestrian and bike-friendly streets. So, um, but, uh, anyway, do we, can we hear from others on this topic, the main topic? Mr. Buruk?
I think I was probably the last meeting since, uh, Mr. Snyder wasn't available, um, one of the most vocal on this issue about, um, needing to provide clarity on this point. So I would certainly support, um, the vice mayor's notion. Um, and in fact, I was intending at the work session to take it further, um, and would still even support taking it further, such as listing, and, and Mr. Z, I take your point about office right now, um, and that may not be viable, um, at the time, but it may change in the future. But there's other usage that are still growing, um, that we're still seeing interest in the city, such as hotel and other, um, commercial activity. Um, so one approach to this, again, would be, um, the vice mayor's suggestion, which I would support, and other would- support, and other would be also providing some more direction, which I'm willing to pull back on. But I think it makes sense to at least have further indication that we're really looking for commercial when we're talking about the mix of usage, even though we would allow some residential. But that can't be more of the same. And I'd rather say that upfront rather than get a bunch of proposals that are more of the same, and, you know, we've gotten the community engaged, and this thing is further out, and we're then struggling to restart the clock where we're getting a big push that we must have a school. And we look back and find ourselves that maybe we weren't clear enough. So I think clarity is not going to harm us if we do it in a balanced way. And I think what's on the table and the various approaches to make that clarity there is one that I would support.
I think we have a comment from the iPhone, so why don't we hold that up to the microphone?
All right, Justin, let's give this a shot. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, thank you all for indulging me in dealing with the audio issues. I do think we've talked about this a lot, and so I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. I think if we want to talk about outcomes, I think that's a wise way to go at it. And if there are things that we want to avoid in terms of outcomes, then we should do that. But I am concerned if we're overly prescriptive, we could end up not seeing some potentially good outcomes. So I would say let's keep it broad. We can look and see what the development community sizes, evaluate it. But, you know, we, I think we need to be open to the fact that the past history in both church is not really going to be, you know, we're in a completely new ballgame here with this parcel. So we should keep our minds and eyes open and see what is proposed in as open-ended a way as possible.
Okay. Okay, other comments from anyone?
I'm sorry, are we talking about Romanet II and the language which says?
The change would be in the precatory language before any of the Romanets. It would be redevelop up to 10.38 acres of the parcels for commercial uses, or a mix of uses which are predominantly commercial in a manner that. So it would be an addition to the precatory language at the start of paragraph C or sub-paragraph C before any of the Romanets.
Okay, I see, I'm sorry. Thank you, Lawrence, I didn't have that sheet in front of me. I don't think it's necessary. I mean, it seems pretty clear that in Romanet II, we specifically say high-quality commercial uses without even contemplating a mix of uses, which I think Romanet II should actually say a mix of uses including commercial. But I wouldn't advocate to change that because the intro language introduces a concept of a mix of uses, which is, you know, sufficiently fuzzy enough language to get around some objections to mixed use if mixed use is seen as some of the kind of uses that we've had now, that we've, you know, had in the newer buildings that we brought in in recent years. Of course, I don't need to give a long speech that I think those mixed uses, well, I don't think, I know, we know, we have data that shows those mixed uses are strongly net revenue positive and are not in any way, shape, or form the primary driver of students that are leading us to increase school capacity. You know, 70% of the student load is coming from established, single-family and other But without getting into all that, I don't know, the vagueness of predominantly, number one, I think it would be predominantly, not predominantly, "commercial," if you included that word. But the vagueness of that, I mean, if somebody came to us, let's say, with a component of this project that was, you know, 51% residential in one of the buildings and 49% commercial, I don't think that would be predominantly "commercial." And I certainly would want to, you know, consider that if that were part of the plan. I don't know, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem necessary. It does seem to prescribe to the market, and the whole point of this is to go to the market and have the market tell us what it thinks would be the best blend of uses and the most economically beneficial to us.
Other comments? Ms. Connolly?
I really don't want to get hung up on these four little words. So I think it's one of those things that if it's there, it goes towards the whole set of paragraphs. If it's there, I think it's okay. If it's not there, I think it's okay. So I don't have a strong feeling either way. Probably doesn't help anyone. But I think that if you look at the whole Section C here, it fits right in there with it or without it.
Okay, how about you, Ms. Oliver, at least from the council side?
I'm satisfied with either version of the language.
Okay, well, my goal is to work through the language tonight now so that we can all get a resolution on this. I'm not sure on the council side, we have a resolution. I don't know if the school board, you know, how you guys feel. I haven't heard too much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I just point out one thing that may be useful in your considerations? And without really looking at, or, I think this is a decision for you, all the policymakers, to make, but Section 2.2 of your RFP is the project goals. And if you look at Section B, it talks about redeveloping the 10.38 acres for high-quality commercial uses. And what you're looking at now and the change that you're considering, it goes into the scope of work, which is, I think, a section that might be seen as a little bit more prescriptive. And that may be what the council and the school board want to do, but I think that's something you ought to consider, is the location of the language about the commercial uses.
Okay, I think we need to work or should work for consensus on this issue before moving on to the next one. Are there any other thoughts on this language? Mr. Sharp?
I'd like to understand better the change that's been made regarding transportation. There was a lengthier description earlier in this part. It's been pulled down to pedestrian-friendly streets. And if I recall correctly, particularly from Metro, there was a request more for access, and it may be across the site, which in this case would be, well, perhaps a street, perhaps not a street. And there was, there was in the earlier language improvements for access to, from, and through the site. So I'd just like to understand what the reason was for the change and what this, what this new language is intended to get instead of the earlier language.
Mr. Shields?
Well, so I think, first of all, what the new language is trying to do is to identify three areas of concern. So one, the land transaction; two, the long-term fiscal impact; and then three, outstanding quality design. And so in rewriting Romanet III, one of the main emphasis that we got from the work session, I think, was that idea of great place and pedestrian-friendly streets. So we tried to put that in. I don't, I think that the former language, which you can see in the cross-out, you know, in that construct, a lot of these concepts were sort of mixed up together, so we tried to pull them out. If that, if that phrase of "provide high-quality effective transportation improvements for access to, from, and through the site" is desired, you know, one thing that, you know, we were thinking about with that was, for instance, how you walk across Haycock, which is, I know, you know, a point that had been raised at the school board meeting. So that, I will note that that, in the current phraseology, is not there quite as strongly. But I think the, what we're trying to do with three is just lay out, we're looking for quality, quality design.
Just perhaps a word that might help to cover these desired changes, instead of saying pedestrian-friendly streets, perhaps pedestrian-friendly access is the better term.
So maybe before we get into that, why don't we try to resolve the other issue? I know it doesn't seem like it has an apparent resolution right now, but I think we need to come to one to get through this document before it runs too late. Is there anyone else who has comments on this issue? Do we have any consensus one way or the other? Are people willing to concede the point one way or the other? Okay, I see, no, no.
How about instead of predominantly, it says substantially?
Okay, is that, is that agreeable to folks?
No.
I see a head... All right, so significantly? Okay, okay, just to make sure we all understand the change and we're okay with it. So do you understand the change, Mr. Shields?
So it would read, "redevelop up to 10.38 acres of the parcels for commercial uses or a mix of uses which are significantly commercial in a manner that..."
Blah, blah, blah. Okay, so we have agreement on that? Okay, good, let's move on before anybody changes their mind. And let's go on to Mr. Sharp's comment. Are there any comments to his comment?
Yeah, so I agree with Mr. Sharp on that language. One of the overarching goals of this development seems to be that it's pedestrian-friendly and that there'll be less parking spaces given the increased number of students. So if we're expecting people to walk to the property, we should give them a safe passage.
Other comments?
I guess I would say if we're going to use pedestrian, I'd like the term a bike as well. Are there other comments to the comment?
The electronic... All right, so do we have some, do we have agreement then on the proposal? I'm not sure we have actual language, but probably pretty close to it.
What was proposed is features outstanding design, including exemplary architecture, pedestrian-friendly access.
Pedestrian and bike.
Pedestrian and bike, I beg your pardon.
So, but we've got some of that already in there. I think really it's just an addition of access, pedestrian and bicycle access to and from the site, or whatever was on there before. To, from, so I think it would just be the addition of a new Romanet that says something like, "provide high-quality effective transportation improvements for access," is that what it was? Is it, yeah, yeah, with maybe pedestrian, bike, and other means of transport, something like that.
So you would do that as Romanet IV?
I think that's what he's proposing. Maybe that's the simplest way to do it.
So take that former sentence and just have that as Romanet IV?
I think so, unless there's another way to work it in. It just might be the simplest way to... Mr. Z?
Yes, I think we all just try to work it in. You know, this setting up transportation access in its own pedestal, I think, maybe just providing a message that we don't intend to send.
Another proposal, just to use it as a subclause or something like that. Can we agree to the extent we will vote on this tonight that to allow some additional wordsmithing? In other words, the resolutions to allow the city manager and the superintendent to wordsmith some of the concepts, or the alternative is to do it right now? Okay. So is there agreement to allow a little flexibility so that they can wordsmith this, you know, the next day or so?
All right, so we will add the word "bike" in, and we will work in that whole sentence in one form or another into that Romanet III. And so that's what we'll do.
Let's keep, keep going. What's the next item then?
So the next item then takes us to the referendum question.
Mr. Snyder, you had a comment, which we heard earlier.
Yeah, let me just, I agree with you about this. In the schedule, we list public referendum. I think everyone assumes we're going to be doing that. But when you go down and you read the footnote, and yes, I'm sorry, I went to law school where you actually read footnotes. In fact, in some cases, they're more important than the actual document itself. It talks about, "Please note that any action or occurrence with regard to a possible public referendum is separate and apart from the PPA. Procurement references thereto in this schedule and this RFP are solely for planning purposes and should not be construed as or implying any certainty regarding the authorization of holding a public referendum." So it seems to me that that casts an unnecessary doubt over whether we're going to hold a referendum on this. I think people are expecting it, and I think we need to be clear about it. That's all.
Okay. Comments? Mr. Z? Vice Chair Lawrence?
I'm in complete agreement with the Vice Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence?
Just a question. If we change it to "public" instead of "bond," if it ends up being a referendum for a bond, there's no problem, right?
Let's ask the city attorney. It seems like a bond referendum is a public referendum.
Yes, I think it is. It's one type of public referendum.
Okay.
Could I, Mr. Duncan, of course? Ask a question on this point, just from a, let's drive a hard bargain perspective. We would need, of course, we'd require to have a bond referendum if the cost of the facilities, the school facilities exceeded 10% of our, right? What if we were trying to encourage one of the proposers to come in with a proposal that did not cost 10%? In other words, we want to incentivize a proposal that would minimize our costs, public costs, as much as possible. I'm just a little concerned that if we require a bond referendum, we are basically inviting the proposers to say, oh, well, they expect to spend, you know, empty million dollars on this project so we don't have to worry about really sharpening our pencils.
Did you want to go, or I could go? So I think the idea, Mr. Duncan, is not necessarily a bond referendum, but a referendum by the public to have input on this process, which is in many ways not, because of the nature of the beast, is not prone to a lot of public dissemination of information, et cetera. So I think the idea is that the bottom line, that the buck will stop with the public. They will have ultimate decision-making power. And so I think that's the idea, not necessarily that the cost is such. I think if the cost was zero, I think many of us, maybe all of us, would like the public to weigh in nonetheless because it's such a monumental project in the history of the city, and it involves, you know, incredible ultimate cost and value to the city. So I think many of us would want to have a referendum irrespective of the cost, and it's not really geared towards the amount, it's geared towards the concept.
Okay, I think that's a good way to put it, just, you know, we're expressing our legislative intent here in everything we say. If the proposers are paying close attention, they'll hear what you just said and understand that, you know, we'd like to see a zero cost, but we are going to go to referendum for all the reasons that you state.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll be listening to what I say, but anyway, Mr. Lawrence, did you have a comment as well, or Miss Crosskey?
If I could just mention, I mean, I think the reason this is drafted this way is really to preserve the options. You know, this is more than a year down the road. We don't know where we'll be. We don't know if we would have already said, "We haven't gotten anything we like on this, and we're not going to do it." So I understand we may have a desire to signal that we intend to get the public to weigh in on this, but in terms of the RFP, it may be wise to make sure that, to some degree, you are preserving your ability or a future council's ability... a future council's ability, to change their mind or do something different. And that's, you may wish to not do that, but I think that in terms of looking down the road, that's probably a better course, is to preserve the flexibility for a later date.
And just one other thought. If the council wanted to make that commitment, it could make that in a separate action as opposed to in the procurement documents. The procurement documents mean now you've involved other parties into that, what is really an internal governance issue. And if you were to make that commitment by separate resolution, then that would be an internal matter as opposed to involving the respondents.
Mr. Snyder, yes, of course.
I guess I'd like to signal to whoever's interested in this that we're going to the people on this. And then I think that imposes a certain amount of discipline on what they're going to do. So I think, I think to put it in any other document, to not put it in this one, gives the impression that maybe we won't do a referendum. And if that's where people are, then I think we ought to state that tonight. But if we're going to commit to doing a referendum, then we ought to put it in this document.
Well, now you've got me worried. So are we, in putting the language in that's there, "Public referendum in November 2016," binding ourselves to conduct a referendum in November of 2016? I mean, what if we decide, gee, that's just too soon, you know, we're going to do it in 2017 or 2018? I mean, I don't, I don't want to tie the hands of a future council if they feel like that is too fast a timetable.
And I think the language has been drafted to say that you expect to hold that referendum, but it, but it's not binding, and that things could change, and that the city council could decide, I mean, you could change the time, that's certainly one option. You may not be moving forward at that point on the same type of project. You don't know what the financing schemes that may be offered would be, that might or might not require a referendum. You might still want to do them for the schools, but I think that's how it's been drafted. And I think, I understand that you desire a level of commitment, but I think it is drafted right now to say one is expected at that time.
All right, that's fine. Mr. Bur.
I think, Carol, with all due respect, I think that's sound legal advice, as far as sort of the documents may go. But I think there was sort of the bigger policy issue of whether this council wants to commit to the public now or the process that this is going to go for a vote, and how we're going to do that. So to Mr. Shields' point, I'm not concerned about what documents it's in, but by the time I approve this thing, I want to know where the council is on this, before I make my final vote, if that makes sense. So if we are going to have a discussion that we're going to possibly take off the referendum, that may be a significant factor on how I'm viewing all of this. And this goes to what Mr. Castillo was talking about, what Mr. Z was talking about. If it's sort of going to ultimately be an internal decision, ultimately what the plan looks like, and we provide no direction, I'd be very concerned about not providing any specifics. But if we are going to go towards a referendum at the end of the day, I have a little bit more confidence that even if we're vague in these documents, that ultimately our citizens are going to be voting on it. So I'm trying to balance all these things out. And if there's a sense by the council that, no, we actually want to forego a vote, then I may view the actual words of the RFP differently, let's just say. Because that takes the checks off. So, Carol, while I hear you, I do actually want to bind this body at this point, because I'm going to be voting on this thing tonight. And some other council isn't going to basically be able to completely undo what we're voting on once we send this into motion. So that's where I'm coming at it. To put it succinctly, if we're going to be loosey on the document, then I want the public vote outside of the bonding issue. But if we're going to be more prescriptive, then, you know, I'll do my legislative duties and put the checks in myself. So that's where I commit this.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
I'll be real blunt. I agree with Dave. I think the public will want a vote on this. They'll expect a vote, and they deserve a vote. So I don't see this as something that we should even talk about as being up in the air at all, if it gets to what you're talking about, Nader.
Okay, other comments? Let's go to Ms. Conley. Oh, Justin, I'm sorry.
Justin, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to come off mute. Okay, a couple of thoughts. I think the first is that I don't think, well, here's a suggestion. I think, well, everybody's, what I would suggest is that we say in the RFP that it's our intention and expectation that there will be a referendum. I don't think this document binds us to calling for a referendum, because there's a different mechanism for that. I think it's fine to say that that's the intention and the expectation, but one of the things that I'm also concerned about is, you know, would they go into referendum, rightly or wrongly telegraphed, that we're expecting that we'll have to borrow a certain amount, so therefore the bidders will build into their proposals?
Justin, Justin, could you go back a few? You're breaking up.
Okay, hold on just a second. Stupid headset. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. What I would suggest as an alternative is saying that it's our intention and expectation that there will be a referendum. I don't think this issuing an RFP binds us as a practical legal matter to holding a referendum, because I think that's a separate process. I think there's a possibility that by saying it in a way that, you know, somehow we think there's absolutely going to be a referendum, we could signal that we expect that we're going to have to borrow a certain amount, and that can change the economics of offers. So I think my modest proposal would be to say in the RFP that, you know, at this time, it's our intention and expectation that this is going to happen, and the proposers should proceed accordingly. But, you know, I think there's a separate mechanism for proceeding down the referendum road. And, you know, as a result, we should be clear-eyed about that and proceed accordingly.
Okay, how about, I think Mr. Sharp had his hand up first, and then Ms. Conley.
Okay, in the first paragraph under 3.2, the second sentence, it allows for modification of the schedule. And I think that applies to, you know, any, any part of the schedule. But how, and then in the second paragraph, and again, the second sentence, I think that's the point where we would want to indicate that regardless of any changes in specific dates about the schedule, that this, this project will not go forward unless there is a referendum that is held as, as the, as the ultimate authorization for it to go forward. But right now, that second sentence is, is giving us a wiggle room to not hold the referendum. And I think we need to change that sentence in order to, to convey that we're definitely going to do it.
Ms. Conley?
Maybe because I'm not a lawyer, I'm not reading this with such legalese, but the paragraph Mr. Sharp's referring to, if we can just say, we just want to seek voter approval of a project of this magnitude, whether there's capital cost or not. I can't imagine that we would say, "Let's go forward and do this, this, and this," and not have a referendum. And I think that's how most people feel. So, "We just want to seek voter approval for a project of this magnitude that may or may not include capital cost." And then at the, in the footnote that Mr. Snyder referenced, this seems more like a scheduling thing, that we're not guaranteeing that there's going to be a referendum in November 2016. Not that we might just say, "Yeah, no referendum."
Why don't you scroll down on the footnote language, Mr. Shields, if you can?
I don't know.
I mean, I view this footnote language as more like a legal caveat. And I think the idea, though, is that maybe we don't want any caveats. We don't want any wiggle room. We want the public to feel very confident that this is going to be put to referendum. So before we start, we know how it's going to finish with certainty. And so I think that's the concern and the reason to want to take away even what might in some ways be legally sound advice, to have a caveat. But, you know, we're acting not as lawyers today, we're acting as elected officials. So that may be the difference. Do we have others who want to speak to this? Mr. Webb?
Just real quick to weigh in as well, I do think we just may as well put the language in to save the public referendum piece of it, because this is going to be one of the biggest projects that the city has undertaken in our history. So I think that weighing in from the public is going to be an important part of it, that we're putting the, kind of the nucleus in place of what we want from it. But I think ultimately, when we hit a final product, I think we do want the public to weigh in, whether there's a financial impact or not. But we do want them to weigh in to say, yes, we approve of this project moving forward.
Okay, sure. Ms. Kearney?
Second paragraph starting the schedule has been developed, that we just need to say to seek voter approval for the project, period. And then it sounds like that next sentence goes away, and the footnote goes away. And I'm going to turn around, because we're not attorneys here, and I'm going to ask our attorneys, other than what you've already spoken to us about, which is we're committing to do a referendum regardless, is there a legal downside to removing those things that we don't understand, because we're not attorneys, we're just elected officials? Are we putting ourselves in some other kind of sticky, wicked situation that's making you guys really nervous if we remove that stuff?
I think it is just what we've said. I would agree with what Wyatt said, is, my concern about this is, this is a document that sort of is out there for the people submitting proposals. And we're trying, I think, to convey something that we want to convey to the public in general. And you can do that, but I think you run a risk that something changes between now and next November, you don't want to do it, and you, one of your proposers complains about that, and you compromise this process. Whereas, when you have this language in there, nothing's going to prevent you from having that, that referendum. And, but I think that you, you don't want to have that commitment out there to those submitting proposals. You want that commitment made to the public, and a different place to do it would be better. But again, it is up to, you know, that's council and the school board's decision at this point.
So what if, well, if we do the rest of the document, and you guys work on alternate resolutions, or in addition to the existing resolutions, or whatever, that could be voted out generally, say, these two bodies to hold a referendum, and we just take all this stuff out of this document, and just talk about the referendum and all, and then separate votes, because people want to see it?
What we could do, we could look at the resolution and the wherethes. I mean, one, just a fundamental fact, this RFP does not bind the governing bodies. And so if you're trying to bind the governing bodies, you need a different vehicle. It's kind of like akin to voluntary concessions. And sometimes there's a discussion that says, "The city shall do something," and the developers voluntary concessions, well, no, that, that's not where we bind ourselves. And so this is similar to that. I think it's relevant in that, suppose a proposer would really like to participate in this, but then they see the language and they say, "Oh, referendum, hmm, maybe I'll pull out and not participate, because I don't want to deal with that." But then down the road, circum, you know, there are circumstances in which a referendum, the council decides referendum's not required or desirable, then that proposer could say, "Well, I was given bad information on that." So in other words, this is, this is information for the proposers, and it's here to protect the city and to give the council options in the future. What the council's saying is, you don't want options. You want to have a referendum. I would submit that the place to make that commitment would be in a separate action. But, so that's our recommendation. If that's not what the council wants to do, then we can work on wordsmithing this.
Well, let me ask this, if I could. If we do a resolution, in a resolution, that's not going to be binding subsequent to this council's term, right? But if we put it in the document, this document is a binding document on the city, irrespective of the change in leadership that may happen, or subsequent opinions. So I think there probably is, by putting it in here, more certainty. I understand it's more risk, because you may possibly have some changed circumstance that we don't contemplate right now. But I think you're also hearing from people that they want the public to be aware of where this comes out, how we know how it's going to come in, you know, how it's going to end. And so I think that's a trade-off people are wrestling with. But I think there's a pretty strong opinion here in council, at least, that we do want to have a referendum. But there are a few more people to hear from it, so I don't want to preclude that until, why don't we go to Ms. Oliver, I think I have her hand up before you did, and then we'll go to Michael, if we can.
So as I listen to this discussion tonight, it brings me back to my original thought when we started this process. And I know that I'm in the minority in terms of my opinion here. But as I listen to this discussion, there are three points that are very clear to me. One, the PPA process is not a good fit for Falls Church City. Two, this is maybe not the right time for us to embark on the PPA process if we're going to try to force it on ourselves. And three, this entire process has been too rushed. Going back to my first point about it not being a comfortable fit, we want a referendum. Some people on the council want to involve other bodies. We don't have a consensus on exactly what it is that we want. And all of this makes it very difficult to go forward with the public-private partnership. I think that's really important for everybody to think about. I know I'm in the minority here, but I just want to raise that again. Two, I think it's the wrong timing. I think it's the wrong timing for us. I'd feel more comfortable if we delayed things for just six months, because we have the complications of an election, we have an awful lot on the city's plate right now, and the office market in the region is down. And we're trying to force something through in a timeframe in which the office market is down. This is our last, you know, this is not the last, but this is a significant space in the city. This just may not be the time to go forward with it. And three, the fact that we're wordsmithing an RFP, which is normally a staff document, like minutes before we want to vote on it, that says to me that we have rushed this process too much, that we should not be doing this level of detailed language manipulation right before we vote. It says to me that we still don't have the consensus. And I'm concerned that we're going to go forward with a, with a product that's not as good as it could have been, and that we're going to get an outcome that's not as good as it could have been. And I just wanted to be clear that I have concerns about this whole process for these three reasons, and this recent discussion just, like, reinforces my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kuma?
I'm not sure if it's, if it's understood that this is going to cost us one way or another. Mr. Shields, is it fair to say this is either a pay now or pay later over time? This project is at some cost. Are we anticipating that someone's going to front it, but that we won't pay anything over time? Or are we anticipating that we're just, it's going to cost something. It's going to cost us. We're either giving up, we're either increasing our taxes, I don't know, 15, 20 cents, or, and pay for it upfront, or we're paying, we're foregoing some revenue over time. Have we even thought about determining whether that's a 20-year period, a 50-year period, a 45-year period? I'm not sure we factored, we're thinking about the fact that this is going to, somebody has to pay for this. The developers may front it, but they'll get their pound of flesh. Shields, could you help me here?
And I assume you're asking that in the context of the question of whether we're going to have a referendum or not, right?
Exactly. And then my question then becomes, what is the referendum going to be about? That we finance it with a pay now or the pay later, or we're asking for permission to just build it? Why are we having the referendum?
Well, I think it's, I think it's pretty probable that the city's going to incur significant debt, one way or the other, in this, in this P3 process. The anticipation is that there could be a structure such as a, as a tax increment financing structure, in which the taxes from the new development, in some degree, pay for the debt service for the high school. service for the high school. And so it becomes a more affordable project than it would otherwise be. And so that's the basic concept. And, and then the land transaction in addition to that also should be helpful to the financing of the high school.
Are we selling land?
Either through a land lease or through, through a sale. And the language is, we prefer a lease, but we would accept other structures because we want to see some of the costs and benefits of those different approaches. But the question is, it is, I think it is likely that there will be an issuance of debt that would require a bond referendum.
Okay. I'm just trying to get away from the notion that it's not going to cost us anything, so.
Okay. Why don't we go to Mr. Duncan, then? Mr. Snyder?
To take us back to where we started, which as I understand it, was Mr. Snyder wanting to have a public referendum, not a bond referendum. I did not mean to disagree with that. I did want to ask the question about whether we're, you know, driving the hardest bargain we can for the taxpayers. I actually was more concerned about the date. But as Mr. Sharp pointed out, the language gives us the flexibility, subject to revision, and the school board and the city council reserve the right to modify the schedule at any time as they deem necessary. So I'm at least willing to support just the change from bond to public referendum and leaving the footnote and the other language, well, leaving the footnote the way it is for the reasons that our attorneys tell us. I mean, my understanding of the reason that language is there is to protect us. You know, we go through this process, the bodies approve, you know, a proposer, and everything's great, the proposer thinks they're going through, and then the voters, for some reason, reject it, you know, and the proposer comes and sues us for some reason. We want language that holds us harmless from, you know, any liability there. So the only thing that would need then to change, as Ms. Conley said, would be to seek voter approval for the project in the language, in the paragraph, the schedule has been developed, et cetera, et cetera. Because we do want to broaden that to include not just a bond referendum, but a public referendum.
Mr. Snyder?
As I've heard people discuss this, we, we intend to have a referendum on this. It'll be a public referendum, which can include bond or not. And the problem with the footnote is that it says, maybe we'll have a referendum, maybe we won't. And that's the fundamental issue. I don't care how it's worded, but I think the problem with the footnote, and for council to argue, oh, well, if we put it in here, it'll be binding, so we don't want to put it in here, we want to do it some other place, is exactly the reason why we need to remove the footnote, because we want it, we want it to be very clear to the public that this is going to go to them before it happens.
Vice Chair Lawrence?
Go ahead.
Okay, Chair.
Chair Castillo. Go ahead, Justin.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to ask a point of order at this point. I've been looking at the charter. There are other, with respect to, to borrowing. I think we need to take a step back and focus on, on the law and what our powers and the powers of the city council are. I've seen one thing in the charter that says that the city council, after resolution, can, can establish a referendum upon not less than 30 days and not more than 60 days, no doubt. I just, I just am asking a question, as a pure matter of law and power, is it possible to do with respect to the referendum what is being sought? Because I have some serious questions that it can be. And that's just a straight procedural matter of, of power and, of proper process.
I think that's a question for our city attorney. I think the question generally was, is it possible for council to, or council and the school board to put it in a document since the charter apparently says you cannot, council can't call for a referendum less than 90 days, or less than 30 days, but more than 90 days in advance of a referendum? Did I capture that right, Justin?
Yeah. My take on it, I could be wrong, is that the, the referendum is prerogative of council. I could be wrong, but that's what it looks like to me.
Do you understand the question?
I do. And I would, yeah, I would just want to take a, a look at the charter, but it seems to me if you agree to do it, you would simply have to also, a future council would have to authorize it. But that's, again, where we don't know where we'll be at the time that that authorization was sought. And that, that would be the concern, but it might be limited, it might limit the future actions because this council would be put at risk at that time if they decided not to do it. And there was a commitment in here to do it, a commitment to the proposers who were...
So how about some language along the lines of, we're going to issue a referendum, however, we'll have no liability if we don't, you know, something where it's, it maybe covers our legal basis, but at the same time clearly sets forth the intention of council and school board. I don't know if that covers this or not. I don't want to get too much into your business, but...
Well, and I think that could be done. I think that's what's intended here, and it may be just that the language is a little bit too strongly worded in one direction, that it's difficult. And we need to maybe work on that a little bit.
Yes. I think the idea that may be agreeable to some is that, look, we want to make it clear we are going to have a referendum, but we also want to make it clear we're not going to have a liability if for some reason, maybe that sort of protects both bodies. But I think it's a pretty clear intention of most of the folks, if not all the folks at the table, that we want to put this out for the public to be the ultimate decision-maker as to this proposal.
And not only that, Mayor, but I think that perhaps the better place to put that kind of language with that kind of specificity, which provides that we want to seek the approval of the public for funding as well as project would be in section nine under reservation of rights where we generally speak to these kinds of things. And that also would make it a prima facie reservation by itself instead of some squirrely little footnote that, at this point, I think only lawyers understand what it says. And I think if you have three lawyers in the room, they have three different opinions about what it says.
Did you follow that comment?
I think, I might have missed some of the words at the very end, but yes, I think that adding the reservation of rights on this point to the, to section nine might be very useful and might help because at this point, you could simply express the intent to, you know, to conduct a referendum before the project goes forward, and then just move the other part to a different location. I think you might also want to, it might be useful to say that there's no obligation to the proposers to have a referendum. In other words, that's who you're really talking to. It's sort of semantics, but it also clarifies that you are committed to the public to doing that.
What do folks think of that? Does that sound agreeable to Ms. Ward?
Yes. I also wanted to add that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we need to do, separate the referendum for the public approval versus the referendum to finance the project. They'd be two separate distincts. This is, no, they're not. I was going back to what Phil had mentioned earlier about saying, you know, that we, we are going to have this, we're going to fund it. And he was, and Phil, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounded like you were opposed to having language regarding a bond because you don't want to give the developers the idea that we're willing to pay for a large part of this project. Is that correct?
That was what I raised initially. It's not a deal breaker for me. The language as it's evolving is to my satisfaction.
Okay. I just didn't know if that was feasible to separate the two, just to have a referendum just for approval of the project, and then one separate for bond. We can't do that. That's not a bit...
You could, yes, but you probably wouldn't want to because even if you were going to do the two referenda, you might, you'd be doing them together. If you were doing a bond referendum, that would be the same as a project one. You wouldn't want to necessarily have two questions at that point if you had one for bonding. And if you didn't, you would just have one referendum.
So I guess, do we have a consensus then to have sort of in this section, some strong language that we intend to do this, but put in the reservation of rights section, the caveat that protects us legally? Is there a consensus of that? Okay. Let's move on then.
So the next section, I think...
Wait, I think you skipped one. I don't know if that was...
There's just a strike.
Okay. Why don't you go down slowly?
There's a striking of the, just the commercial real estate development. The timing of the work, I don't think that's substantive. Section K, this was discussed at the work session. This is the actual language relating to the, asking the proposers to identify and describe any involvement in the project development on the part of any owners or tenants of adjacent properties. And that's on page 12. And then we move to the evaluation process and criteria. And so this is the last section that has significant changes.
This is just a minor point, but it says, for purposes of this RFP only, this section 5.0, I mean, it's actually in section 5.1. I don't know if that's a typo or not. And maybe it should say, purposes of RFP only, section 5.0 shall supersede, or... Okay, it's weird. The numbering is weird on this, actually.
Yeah. I think the reference is, to clarify, that it's the entire section 5.0.
Okay. It's just, the numbering seems weird, but I don't care.
So the reference to the renovated high school, middle school expansion, all of which meet the school board's projected increase. And we go down to C, and it reads whether and to what extent the proposer's concept for developing up to 10.38 acres of the parcels. And then it just lists the three criteria. And so we will need to work into this, Romanet III, the discussion about the transportation to and through the site. And so we'll make that parallel. Are there any other changes or discussion of this section?
Keep on going.
All right. And then E, we do have in the evaluation criteria, any anticipated involvement in the project development or part of the owners or tenants of adjacent properties. This is just a question of timing here at 5.5. So this is a technical change. I don't think this came out from council comments, but we would evaluate the reasonable and anticipated effectiveness of the proposer's strategies and plans to be implemented following the execution of the comprehensive agreement. That's paragraph A at the top of page 17 on the marked-up copy. It may be different on the clean copy.
Go back up briefly to the anticipated community, educational, blah, blah, blah.
So this is the last criteria area, project benefit and compatibility. So we've added in anticipated community, educational, social, environmental, and transportation benefits of the project that are unique to the proposer's approach to the project, along with the project's compatibility with current governmental planning.
Not sure I understand that, to be honest with you. I mean, I don't know if we have any current governmental planning on that site. Do we?
It's very, very spare.
Well, and wasn't there at one point a reference to compliance with the comp plan? Is that where...
Yeah. So we have taken that out because the comp plan does not, we have not done a comp plan amendment for the site yet.
Right. But we're going to, and we would want it to comply. I mean, it seems like when you say compatibility with current governmental planning, to me, I hear comp plan. So I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't say that since every other project, people have to come in and explain how it fits into our comp plan, right?
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's going to be difficult on this site because the comp plan does not speak to this site.
So I don't know how, what's this section entitled?
So this is the community benefits.
Is this an evaluation criteria?
Mm-hmm.
So scroll back down if you don't mind. I have to say, I'm not sure, having read that language, what that's getting at. What was the, what was the genesis of that? Why was that section put it in, put in? Did we have comment about that last? I don't recall comment as to that point. I guess there's a couple of reasons why I'm not sure I understand what it's saying. Benefits that are unique to proposer's approach to the project. What is that intending to mean?
Well, I mean, I think it's going to be pretty obvious from their proposals. So what this would be, you know, in terms of evaluating it, we would, we would be saying, okay, what's unique to this proposer?
They'd have to know what the other proposals are, wouldn't they, to know what's unique?
No, but the evaluation team will.
So they're going to say, we're saying what's different about this one, but is that really, is that a critical evaluation for us? In other words, don't we want what we want, no matter if everyone provides it or not? Just because it's unique doesn't mean it's desired?
Well, and just, not having been here last week, but I think that what this might enable you all to do is to find something particular in a proposal that is, you find to be very compelling and that would therefore enable you to identify it under this paragraph as something that gives them sort of a lot of traction in terms of having their proposal evaluated well. That's, that's the one place where I could see it could make a difference. In other words, they have something very particular that's unusual, but that you really want to give them a lot of credit for possibly.
But don't we have an unfettered right to pick any proposal irrespective of whether it, you know, meets the criteria or not? In other words, this isn't like a federal procurement where you get points for each different matrix or whatever. We can pick whatever proposal we want, correct? Irrespective of whether, quote, someone might think it's unique or the best one. It's up to us to decide that.
You have a good amount of discretion, but I think it's also has to fit within the general evaluation criteria that were in the RFP. But yes, you, there's a good amount of discretion that's available.
Mayor, I don't see a harm in, in putting that in there. Actually, I think it's to our benefit. That's kind of the, the last criteria here that says, and anything else that you think is really special about yours that we might like or not. I'm okay with it.
It's fine. Just doesn't read very well to me, but anyway. Okay. Other comments on this, or should we move on to the next point?
I have a quick question. With reference to current governmental planning, is that just Falls Church, Virginia, Fairfax, all three?
What could very well be best practices of other governmental or non-governmental or advisory, quasi-governmental, other country governmental bodies? Like I said, I'm not, I would reword it differently, but I don't think that we need to spend our time on this.
Not to belabor this point, but since there is no governmental planning, it sounds like on this site, should we just take out the word current and just put governmental planning?
Well, one thing that we, we do, we should note is that the school, you know, appendix C is actually pretty detailed in terms of the school programmatic needs. And so that's, that is certainly governmental planning that we would be measuring their compliance against.
All right. Why don't we keep going then?
The, I think that is, runs through our major track changes.
But can we also have guidelines, correct, that we really haven't spent a whole lot of time on? We'd like to go through those, the guidelines, which are the secondary document.
These are the PPEA guidelines. We have not had a robust discussion of those, and I'll turn that over to Carol for just a quick briefing on that.
The guidelines, and I think the school board already has adopted their revised guidelines. So we could take this up with the council's discussion. So we could take this up with the council's discussion. But the guidelines were revised based, beginning with the recommendation by the initial outside council. And the revisions really are not substantive. There's one particular change that it enables, there's an option included now for the city council to request fees when the, for solicited proposals. It doesn't require it on every proposal that's solicited. It does have it automatically on unsolicited proposals, but it does give you that option. Other than that, really, the changes were to simply streamline the document. Redundancies have been removed. Things have been reorganized a bit to better reflect the sequence of projects under the PPEA. Some unnecessary general language has been removed. The revised guidelines also have updated the standards to incorporate and reflect recent experience by various jurisdictions and incorporate the best practices in administering PPEA projects. So it's really a rewrite that is just to clarify and update the document. I will note that there is, that there are some bullets that were not filled in, in the latest version that you have in your packet. And if you look at, I believe it's page four, no, it's page five, I'm sorry, in section 4.3.2.1, it's the fees for unsolicited proposals. The amounts being recommended for the initial processing fee is $7,500 with an initial, excuse me, with an additional conceptual phase proposal fee of $20,000, which would be charged if you went forward with accepting the conceptual, accepting the unsolicited proposal and soliciting others to cover the costs of consultants, et cetera, that are needed for the evaluation of those proposals. And those numbers appear two places in those paragraphs where there are currently just bullets. So that's really the extent of the changes. They're not, as I say, substantive, really. It's just a more streamlined document that reflects modern practices and the experience of sort of the industry over the last few years. So if there are any questions, we think this document will better serve you. We started the project with initial outside council, but the revised guidelines have been reviewed also by the current outside council.
So I'm wondering if we could take a step back, because we really haven't had an in-depth discussion. I know you were out of town last week, but we didn't get to the guidelines or didn't spend a lot of time on those. Maybe, Mr. Shields, you could just take us through the document briefly, and we've heard the changes. But maybe see if anyone's got any questions in a brief run-through. Would that be okay with folks? Yes, Ms. Connelly?
Ms. McCosker, I just have one question. If we do get through this RFP tonight and are able to issue it by July 30th, does that then preclude all unsolicited bids because the process has begun?
It doesn't preclude them. Somebody could submit a new one. If, if it were for this type of project, of course, the fact that you haven't solicited RFP out there would probably affect how city council and/or the school board wanted to consider that proposal. But it wouldn't prohibit somebody from submitting one.
Okay.
So why don't we go briefly through the guidelines, if we could? Briefly.
Do you want to go through the-
Maybe we should, Mr. Shields.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say about them either, because they don't really change much. But they begin with applicability, and they talk about the overview, that being the responsible public entity. It notes that the responsible public entities in the city could be either the city council or the school board, and that the school board would be the RPE primarily for school projects. And the council would be for other types of projects in the city. It references the eligible projects, referring primarily and giving some examples from the, from the PPEA, the state law, but doesn't include everything. I think previously we had the entire list there, and that's one example of something that's been streamlined. It then, you know, has some general provisions, which generally reflect the requirements of the, of the state law, the PPEA. It talks about proposal review fees.
Let me stop you on the proposal review fees. Did, I know you spoke to that a minute ago.
Yeah.
My recollection was there was no fees previously. Was that mistaken?
Yes. Under the current, the current guidelines do contain a fee for unsolicited proposals of $25,000.
Okay, but the RFP that we've issued has no fees. Is that right?
That's correct. And that's done to preserve the competition. Now, what the new guidelines propose to do is they have, would have fees for unsolicited proposals. It's a $7,500 fee just to submit it. And then if the council decides to accept it and move forward, we'd require an additional $20,000, because at that point, we'd have analysis and outside help. Under 4.3.2.2, you now have the authority under your guidelines to impose a fee with a solicited proposal. Frequently, that's not done simply so that you get the best competition you can and don't dissuade people from submitting, but you do have the option to do that at this time. That's, that's really the one, the one change that's in here.
And so these cover both solicited and unsolicited.
That's correct.
So these are overall PPE, PPEA guidelines, whether it's solicited basket or the unsolicited basket.
That's correct. They would cover all projects in the city.
And the RFP that we're discussing right now would take preference, and so if there's an event of a conflict, the RFP takes precedent, correct?
That's correct. And, and if you, if you compared these documents carefully, you would see that the structure's pretty similar for the two things. And you will note, we talked about some language tonight where 5.0, section 5.0 of the RFP specifically supersedes part of the guidelines. And there's another place in, that was already in the RFP that says it specifically supersedes, that section specifically supersedes part of the guidelines. But in general, the guidelines are your overarching document that governs your procedures. And then your RFP would be specific to the project, and you would just about always say that that document takes precedence. And that has been done in this RFP. That is, it notes that where it is different from the guidelines in specific matters that aren't generally called out, it governs the RFP.
Gotcha. So for purposes of tonight, we're focusing on the RFP. This document is only relevant to the extent the subject matter isn't addressed in the RFP.
That's correct. And this, this document, though, will, is recommended because it, it gives a clearer and more modern approach to the guidelines in general, and therefore will serve you better as sort of your backup to your RFP.
Okay. Can you maybe discuss the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the relevance to both the RFP and to this document, just so the idea that people can understand what is publicly available, what might not be, and how that works, particularly with this project or proposal?
Yes. Under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, there is an exemption for materials that are submitted as part of PPEA proposals that are considered trade secrets or otherwise are confidential financial information. And I'm not going to come up with all three of the categories right now, but there are three things that are named. And it usually is a substantial amount of information, as we saw when we received the unsolicited proposal. So generally, information is public unless it is identified by the proposer when they make their submission as being a confidential or a trade secret. And if it is so identified, it, and if it is agreed between ultimately the jurisdiction or the responsible public entity and the proposer that it's confidential, then it is not subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. There is room for a process when a proposer submits their material and identifies certain information as confidential or a trade secret, which enables the RPE to review their material and challenge their discussion. And ultimately, the city could say that we believe something is not a trade secret, and we will disclose it. And then the applicant has the ability to either withdraw their proposal or allow it to be discussed. So there is some process for identifying what is actually a trade secret or confidential information under the act. But once it is identified by the proposer as such and agreed by the city, then the Freedom of Information Act protects it and makes it confidential. And that's one of the things that is difficult. We have very complex proposals coming in under this, for this RFP, and the unsolicited proposal was very complex. And so there's a great deal of information that's confidential, simply because it represents how the whole project would work together.
I think that's why, at least members of council have some questions about this, because we like to disseminate as much information publicly as available, but the law precludes that. And so that's where you really have the rub.
Yes. And ultimately, I think it, it will stand the city and the school board in good stead when truly trade secrets, confidential information is protected in this way, because that will enable us to have a, a process with integrity and a procurement process that gets us the best deal that we can. And ultimately, when we reach an agreement, much of this information then becomes public.
Why don't we keep rolling through this unless there are any questions?
Is this the time to ask the question that I posed in my email about, you know, the nature of public dialogue during an election season, as we're faced with questions, debates, and questionnaires, and so forth regarding the process and how we deal with those? Last week, we talked about that. You were, missed the fun, but, you know, the, the view that was shared by Mr. Wall was not warmly greeted, I think.
Well, and I think it does create somewhat of a difficult situation, because so much of this information that will be developed between, or that will come in to the city is going to be confidential. And it is difficult, and it's, it is important to recognize that to get a good procurement process, we need to maintain the confidentiality of this information and make sure that we don't, that council and school board members do not get out in making representations about the RFP that aren't exactly consistent with that document, because that document represents what we're expecting people to make their proposals based on. And it will be very important that they not be misled in any way. I mean, even in, and I know it would be inadvertent, but to, in such a way that they would be, believe that certain things were more important, because the definition is that document, as, you know, we've, you all have struggled to a great deal with the language, recognizing that there are many nuances to this that become important. So I think that document represents what, you know, what the criteria are for evaluation and what people are going to be judged on. And then there may be addenda when questions come in, but those addenda will all be issued through the purchasing office, so that everyone is making their proposal based on the same requirements and understanding the same evaluation criteria.
Okay. Why don't we keep on track unless there's some other comments or questions?
I'm not quite finished with that, but I'll leave it for now.
Okay.
Could I ask one other question about the responsible public entity for the respective activities of school or a city? I heard you describe, you know, each body has its own responsibilities, but for, as it relates to the project that's before us, which is a hybrid, is there any reason to believe that, you know, the school board or the city council are ceding any kind of authority to the other body, or is this a collaborative and joint endeavor?
This is a collaborative and joint endeavor, and I think the RFP makes that clear, that at some point, when there's a comprehensive agreement, the different parties may enter into it for different aspects of the project, but that they will be working together throughout the project. And actions will not be taken unless both parties are in agreement.
Okay. And the only other thing to the election stuff is, I wrote down what you said about, as long as representations are consistent with what the language of the RFP says, then that degree of public comment would be allowed by a candidate or anyone. Well, we're talking about incumbents here who are, I mean, as a practical matter, that's the script that you need to stick to. And in terms of what information would be available, because nothing is really due to us until October 30th, we don't expect, we're not, as a practical matter, going to be dealing with any kind of sensitive information during the campaign about the proposals.
That's right. Right now, what you're really looking at is the fact that you're in the midst of a procurement process, and the integrity of that process needs to be maintained. But that's correct. The confidential information will not come in till the end of October.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? Or should we keep on going? Mr. Shields?
The evaluation that we would be putting on, on this, much of it is, is kind of flexible at this point, with such concepts as the project will benefit the city and the surrounding community is one of the ways that the benefit is described. And I think as we, as we go forward, Mr. Shields talked about involving the public as much as possible in how we, how we do this process. And that was specifically, I think, relating to whether we would have additional people on the evaluation team. Well, I'm not arguing at this point for additional people on that team, but I am suggesting that we need additional processes outside of the team's confidential work, where the public can provide their input on, on what is beneficial to them, both within our community and those, you know, of our neighbors. What it is that would be compatible for them, what kinds of additional projects they may have in mind that they want to pursue, and to the extent we can gather that information and have it available for our evaluation team to, to determine, okay, what are the, what are the benefits for this project? That's, that's where I think the, the involvement of the public can be very important. And it doesn't, it doesn't involve confidential material. It doesn't involve the analysis of, of some, some proposer's balance sheets or anything of that nature. But it, but it does involve a rather intensified, at least I would hope it would be an intensified questioning of what is it that the public really wants to see from this project? What would be beneficial for them? And to gather that information over the next 90 days or so, get as much of it to be available to the proposers as possible. But it, but it will also have an influence on what the, what the evaluation team eventually comes up with.
Yes, and I think it's also good to remember that this is the conceptual phase, and much of that more detailed information about exactly what is going to be, or what we want is going to be very useful as we move into phase two, and we have more specifics and more direction given to people, to the proposers in terms of what they're to be submitting.
Okay, why don't we keep rolling through this document? So the guidelines were done. That was it?
I think there's, there are a few more provisions on solicited, unsolicited proposals, all of which are really sort of technical. They outline the nature of a proposal, what elements it, that is to be submitted, what elements it should include. And they reflect in many ways, as I said earlier, the same thing that's in the RFP, because in many ways, they overlap. And that's really, and then I think, and we probably do have some reservations of rights for all proposals, and some explanation of the commitments that we expect a proposer to make when they enter into this process.
Okay. Are there any comments that haven't been asked about the guidelines? Ms. Connelly?
I'd just like to confirm, these guidelines will match the school board's guidelines. Is that right?
That's correct, yes. They're obviously with the names changed-
Right, right.
-for the two documents, yeah.
And the school board's already approved their guidelines.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone, either on the RFP or the guidelines? Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, is there anything else?
Point of process?
Yes.
I move we continue this meeting past 10:30.
Do we have a second? This is for city council folks. All in favor on city council?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. We're going to keep talking here. So unless there's any other comments from the school folks or the city folks, city council folks, I suggest we go ahead and go our separate ways for this evening. Seems like we have a consensus on at least what will be voted on as far as this document. And we will continue our regular meeting, the city council will, after, let's say, a five-minute adjournment. And otherwise, look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thanks for everyone coming out this evening on the school board's side. Our public hearing will continue five minutes from now, and folks who want to make public comment can do so at that time. Thank you very much. Okay, why don't we continue now with the second part of our hearing? So you're, we've got a speaker, but it's on the cable franchise agreement. Is there anyone, I'm going to call for public comment, I know I have earlier, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the RFP or the guidelines we've just been discussing in joint work session? Okay, seeing none, the matter is closed to the public, why don't we go ahead and have some discussion here at council about the RFP and the guidelines? Is there anyone who wishes? Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to approve TR-15-18 Resolution to approve and authorize in conjunction with the school board the release of the request for conceptual proposals pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act to include a new George Mason High School expansion of the existing Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School and commercial development. And the version of that is, if you look at line 209 in the proposed resolution, that's part of the package, under TR-15-18, do people have it in front of them?
209.
If I may, before we go too far down, we need to do the guidelines first.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay. Well?
We need to do the guidelines first, in which case, I move approval of TR-15-17, Resolution Adopting Revised Guidelines for Implementation of the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We're not going to vote on that now, but we'll have a discussion about that and the other item. Can we hear the motion as well for the second item and have discussion? We'll vote on them separately?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Snyder, why don't you go back to your motion?
Okay, then I move approval of TR-15-18, Resolution to Approve and Authorizing Conjunction with the School Board the Release of the Request for Conceptual Proposals Pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act to Include a New George Mason High School, ex, new or?
What?
New or renovated George Mason High School, high school. All right, so we're going to need to take a look at this, because, hold on a minute, new or renovated George Mason High School. And, okay, to include a new or renovated George Mason High School and expansion of the existing Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School and commercial development. And with regard to the resolution, TR-15-18 itself, I would move as revised as follows. It's page six of six on the staff report, and it's line 208, which would be changed to read, authorizes the city manager in conjunction with the superintendent to make any administrative or ministerial changes and other cha, and here's the new language, and other changes agreed to in the City Council and School Board Joint Work Session on July 27, 2015. And that was additional language recommended and approved by the city attorney.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. A discussion on either item? Do we have any discussion folks would like to make? Okay. Ms. Connolly?
We have had so much discussion on this. I don't want to say too much, but I do want to say I am thrilled and excited that we've gotten to this point. This is a big moment for the City of Falls Church, and I can't think of a process that will work better at this point. I think the timing is right. I think the process leaves us open for a lot of possibilities, and I really think the future is bright. So I am very pleased with this process and looking forward to what comes next.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just briefly, I just want to get on the record here saying that I'm pleased and thankful for the adjustments in the language that were agreed to by everyone and implemented by staff, replace or renovate the language about the neighbors and adjoining property owners being included, the capacity issue, the involvement of the EDA and the planning commission, and the legal opinion from the attorney, the information about what we can say in the election format, I think that was helpful. Also want to thank the folks who, you know, read this and scrubbed it hard and did not think that it was quite ready for prime time. I understand that some tough issues sometimes do just need more time, and they need to be set aside, and I respect folks who believe that about this. I come down on a different side. I do believe, for the reasons earlier stated, that this document is a good document, and as I wrote down the difficulties that some folks who commented had with it, the renovate and build language has changed, the timetable, which to some seems hasty, is, as it says in the language, flexible. If we find out that it's going too fast, we can slow it down. The city council does not cede any authority or responsibility to the school board. It's a joint collaborative endeavor. You know, slowing the process down is, is an option. I'm somebody who has been going, and others have too here, I know, to meetings about the new high school since sometime in the 1990s, and I just believe the process that we're setting in motion here today is a responsible process that has flexibility built into it, and that even if some other things don't go our way, such as Mount Daniel, which I hope does go our way, this document gives us some ability to adjust to circumstances that we, right now, can't exactly contemplate. So I intend to support it.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Oliver?
Well, I know I'm in the minority. I just did want to say that I, I am a great fan of the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, but I do not think it fits well with the process that we have historically used in the city. I'm concerned about the questions that have been raised, about the involvement of other bodies, the timing of the referendum, and the, and the attempt to bind future councils to the referendum, or not bind future councils to the referendum. I think that, that while the act offers great potential, it's not necessarily a great fit for the city. I also think that this is the wrong timing. We're wrestling with Mount Daniel. We have a lot of projects coming online in the city. I, I think that waiting a few more months to take a look at what we really need in the city would have been helpful. And I think that our entire process on this has been too rushed and driven by an initial unsolicited proposal, and some people's desire to stop going to meetings that they've been going to since 1999 on the, on the new high school. I think that we would have been better served by taking a little bit more time upfront to reach consensus before we went forward with this. So I'm, I'm concerned about using the process in this instance.
Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. I am very appreciative of all the public's input. I think it's been extremely valuable. I think we've tried to be responsive and, in fact, have made some significant changes in response to the input that we've received. I think that really moving forward at this point with this document is the only way to really test some assumptions, or wishes, or hopes, that we can get some significant commercial development of the kind that we describe, and that it will have a major, make a major contribution to funding new or renovated school facilities. So I guess I feel that much more time would not surface significant new issues, instead would have a tendency to delay things even, even further and put off for the time when we can really test what are the hoped-for relationships between the commercial development and the school facilities, and the hoped-for financial contribution and quality of the commercial development. So I think while those who argue for more time make some good points, I think overall, the only way we're going to find out how realistic some of the assumptions are that have been made is to now test it through the market, but to do it in a careful way, as we're proposing to do. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I'll just echo, I think, some of the comments that were made earlier. I think this site offers some very exciting possibilities for both the city, but frankly, in Northern Virginia, this is a really unique opportunity. There aren't many sites of this size with proximity to metro and I-66, Route 7, and other transit possibilities. So I think there's a lot of exciting, exciting options, things that could happen here, and really, this, I think, is a vehicle to test those possibilities. I'm hopeful we'll get some very interesting proposals. I think the marketplace is very good at creative ideas, and so I'm hopeful that we'll get some, some good responses. I do share some of the concerns about the PPE vehicle, PPEA vehicle, but I'm satisfied with some of the things that are in the RFP, that we could stop the process at any time, we could reject proposals at any time, and the ultimate decision-makers of these proposals is going to be the voters. So I think the ultimate power is where it belongs with the citizens of Falls Church. So I am satisfied that this process can work. So that's all I've got. Unless anyone else has any other comments, I suggest we move to a vote on the first item and then the guidelines, and then go to the vote on the, on the RFP. So Madam Clerk, will you do the roll call vote?
Yes, on the motion on TR-15-17. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero. And on the second motion for TR-15-18, Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries six to one.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the staff work that's gone into those items. Why don't we move on to our, our next items and try to get through those quickly? I know we have some folks that have been sitting around for many, many hours. My apologies to you, and my thanks to you for sitting around this long. Hopefully, we can take care of this without too much more ado. Ms. Mester, do you want to take us through quickly and briefly the proposal before us?
Certainly. This is related to TO-15-09, an ordinance renewing the franchise awarded to Coxcom LLC, also known as Cox Communications, Northern Virginia, for a 10-year, non-exclusive cable franchise system for the City of Falls Church. We do have a Cox representative, Catherine Falk, is, is available this evening for questions, and we do have the president of the Cable Access Board here as well. This is for second reading, so council has had a full first reading in detail of the staff report, so I'm not going to go through that. There are no significant content changes to the franchise agreement as seen at first reading. What did occur was follow-up, as council directed, to work with the Cable Access Board and the full steering committee of the tripartite agreement for the PEG access channel, which would include general government schools and the Cable Access Board, to address the concerns related to granting the PEG fees, the allocation, and the commitment to working together in a tripartite arrangement. So we had two meetings, as I've noted, started at line 33 of the staff report, and we all came to a consensus that indeed we have a shared commitment for the ongoing relationship of the PEG station, but the proper vehicle to really codify that and establish our working relationship is through the MOU or the tripartite agreement, which currently exists and is in the process of being updated. So to make sure that we documented that, since the two documents are not occurring at the same time, you'll see that there is on line 287, two additional whereas's proposed in the resolution. These were developed and consensus agreed to by the three members of the steering committee that is before, wording that's before you this evening. And so that is to reinforce the importance of the continuation of the public access channel and using the PEG grant fees, which come from this franchise agreement as well as one other in the city. And that also, council honors the existing tripartite agreement and expects the update of those terms in the near future. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I know Ms. Falk would be as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Mr. Baruch?
Cindy, thanks for all your work on this, and also to the city attorney for, for bringing this to fruition. I had raised some concerns about notification issues and planned outages. Can you talk about that specifically as it relates to this agreement and what we're doing regionally as well?
Certainly. There was some concern during service maintenance for interruption of services, especially now that a lot of the services are bundled for cable, internet, and telephone. This is a cable franchise agreement, and so it's specifically related to that, but we did work with Cox to minimize the impact of the necessary maintenance to the system, so that it happens during the lowest use by subscribers, which I believe is generally 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. And that if there's going to be an outage more than one hour, then we would receive notice, both the city and the subscribers, so that you would have advance notice of planned maintenance work. Of course, in an emergency situation, notice will be attempted and reasonable, but can't be guaranteed because of the emergency nature.
So, Cindy, thank you. So while we have the representatives, I just kind of want to let you know how this issue surfaced. And it's one of those random issues that myself, as a council member, it occurred with me, which means it's probably occurring to other customers as well, and it reminded me of what happened with Verizon when I was mayor and was sitting with the vice mayor and others trying to deal with that, some ways which was a very devolving situation. And I don't want to compare it to that, but it was one that the region didn't understand quite well of how we got to where we did, and I don't want to relive that. But what I, and again, this may not be unique to Cox, but other service providers that are bundling and pulling essentially copper, when we're moving away from copper, is one, we're not telling customers what some of those ramifications are, which is if there's an outage on one of the signals, the phone line can be compromised at the same time. Now, we have elderly folks in our community who may not use cell phones, and cell phones for the purposes of E-911 and locating folks is not reliable. And that's one of the things that I was very worried about when I realized that this is, this in case is a fact. So I know the folks are working on this, and I appreciate the work that you've done with the city, but it's sort of a one-off, and I would encourage you to do that throughout the region and throughout the country. And this is not sort of specific to one provider, I imagine, but is probably an issue with many providers. I would not be doing my job here as a public official if I didn't make the public case for this now, because, God forbid, we have some other thing that happens, and the entire, you know, say, network goes down, whether it's Cox or another provider. I don't want to be sitting here and say, hey, we didn't think about that, especially on the heels of what we saw during, during the derecho, and what happened is a consequence of that. And that made it very difficult, to say the least, for our first responders, especially in this region.
Certainly agree.
So I hope you take heed. I hope the region takes heed and continues to work on this issue, and there's got to be mechanisms that we can do that on, especially for the planned outages. And to be clear, sort of, I get the unexpected And to be clear, sort of, I get the unexpected outages, but the planned outages where it's maintenance on systems and people are not notified is sort of not acceptable. Thank you.
And certainly with Cox, we work to minimize the impact and notice would be given if the outage is more than an hour, and as I've mentioned to council previously, we'll continue to work with our regional payers and COG for resiliency during the emergency outages when a lot of our systems are at risk.
And, and again, I do appreciate the work that the Cox and others are, are doing on this front, but again, I felt that it was important to highlight, but it shouldn't just, it shouldn't be in the scope of negotiations on a, on this type of thing, and we make some progress.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
May I ask a question about undergrounding of utilities? There's a neighbor, neighborhood in town somewhere where Dominion is undergrounding the electric wires, and I understand that the other utilities, telcoms, are not participating in that undergrounding. So while we get the benefit of the power lines being underground in terms of their, you know, security, we don't get the visual benefit of the poles going away because the other providers don't participate. Does this document discuss, contemplate that, and what can we do about that situation?
The program that you're referring to for Dominion Virginia Power is a strategic undergrounding program, which for the City of Falls Church predominantly occurs in the residential area. It is a voluntary program in partnership with those residents to secure easements, and it is for undergrounding utilities. It does not, as you noted, require that the communication lines would also be undergrounded. But in discussion with Dominion on their program, as well as with our communication utilities, they are working together collaboratively to see if there's an opportunity. Dominion specifically has approval to recoup the costs over a 10-year period through rates, and so there's a mechanism to cover the cost for undergrounding that does not exist for the communications. But I have been assured that all parties are working collaboratively to see what opportunities there are to do mutual undergrounding to get rid of the poles. The communication lines will still remain exposed and at risk for trees in the city to take down those lines, because now the power lines won't also be there. That said, the Cox franchise agreement does speak to new lines being undergrounded. If the city identifies a project and we can move the poles, and we could partner to underground and cover the costs, and also whenever poles and lines are moved, there is a mechanism where regionally the utilities work together to move poles or underground, and we hope that would help facilitate the process. And for any other specifics, I might defer to Ms. Falk, if you would like more comments.
Well, I guess, I, thank you. That's very thorough, and I guess, yeah, I, I would like to, I have some sense, I suppose, from Cox as to understand there's a cost involved.
Sure. Catherine Falk, I'm a market leader for Cox Communications. Thanks for letting me speak to you tonight. Cindy's corrected everything that she said. If there's a particular place that you want me to check on a project, I'm happy to take that address and get you information. We do work closely with Dominion Power and with Verizon and the other utilities that are on the, the poles in partnership to underground, you know, where it's appropriate.
Okay. I think-
But she, as she mentioned, there is a 10-year plan that Dominion has, and they've been allowed to recoup costs. So for us, all the, all of the cost is generally our cost.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm happy to check on any project and report back to you.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. That'd be helpful. Maybe somebody can help me out. Midvale, I think, was one of the streets. Over in Broadmont, I think, is the general area Cindy you may know.
Dominion has identified as of three areas that they're doing feasibility study. Midvale's the only one that's progressed to this extent where neighbors have received letters and easement docs, and those are probably the ones you're hearing from.
Yeah.
But we'll coordinate that with Cox.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you looking into that. My other question relates to, back to the hyperlocal. The tripartite agreement, just remind me the process. So does that come before council in the same way, shape, and form that, that this document does? I mean, is that something that gets worked up and then we review it and pass it, or is the tripartite agreement different?
No, the tripartite agreement will take approval by the three governing bodies that are part of the partnership, so that would be council, the school board, and the Cable Access Board. It is, the current one has been adopted by resolution, so it'll be similar to this document, but it won't require first and second reading as an ordinance does. But it'll be a formal public hearing and adoption by council.
Okay. I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Any other comments? Is there any member of the public? I know there's one. So come on up, Bob. And if there's anyone else, you're free to speak as well afterwards, just put in a speaker slip. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Bob Laffrathune. I live at 202 West Rosemary Lane, and also I'm currently chair of the Falls Church Cable Access Corporation. Cindy did a great job succinctly summarizing what has happened since the last time we were here before you, and it was a very productive meeting with the steering committee, and the steering committee is a representative of the Cable Access Corporation, the city government, and of course, the city schools. And we understood in, in the past, what has happened is that there's, there's a 1% of 95% of revenue from the telecoms, and, and it's split 1%, 1%, 1% among the city government, the city schools, and the public access corporation. And checks have gone directly to those three different organizations. But Cox preferred that it would go to the city for easier accountability of the access grants going to one source, and so we understood that. And we just had a conversation with Cindy in regards to once, the, once the funds come into the city government within about seven business days or so, whatever is practical once, once we consult with the, the finance director, that they go to the, the public schools and also the Cable Access Corporation. So you have the best of both worlds, accountability, and then also they're, they go where they're supposed to go. And then the other, the other thing we wanted to communicate was that we'd really like to see the PEG channel agreement, or what's now known as the tripartite memorandum of understanding, just to have that process expedited. So as early as possible in the fall, that, that would be great. We think that would help serve the community better, and I know there's a busy docket for the fall, but if it could be, that process could start in, in September at least, that would, that would be great from our perspective. So we very much appreciated working with the city government, the city schools, and having the, the two whereas included, and we look forward to, to negotiating and renewing, actually, the, the tripartite agreement. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work and your willingness to compromise, and we certainly appreciate all your input. Are there any other comments or questions, or should we move to a vote on this?
Just one, the language on line 292. I don't think you need the last "and" in the second whereas clause, right? Once you're finished with the whereas's, you can just go now, therefore, be it ordained. Is that correct?
That is correct. We can delete at 292, the second-
Just earned my pay here. Mr. Mayor?
Eli Duncan.
All right. Is a motion in order. May I move to adopt TO-15-09?
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Why don't we call the roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And the motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all for coming out and sticking around. We appreciate it, and I guess we've got another item or two. Why don't we move on to the next one?
Thank you, counsel.
We have TO-15-10, ordinance awarding a non-exclusive 30-year franchise to use public property to provide power within the corporate limits of the City of Falls Church to the successful bidder.
Good evening, counsel. This item, we briefly spoke at your last work session. The staff report has not changed since that time, nor the proposed terms of a electric utility franchise agreement. I'll be glad to entertain questions, but I do want to highlight just some of the key terms, and that staff's request would be that council tonight authorizes the advertisement per state code for a receipt of bids, so we've issued an invitation for electric utility bids that would close the bidding on August 10th, which would be your next regular council meeting at 7:30 at the opening of your council meeting. Depending on the number of bids received, action could take that, place that evening if it's easy enough to review and staff can make a recommendation, or it could be deferred to your first September meeting of the 14th. Staff is anticipating at this point that we'd recommend and schedule the advertising for the August 10th so we can wrap before your recess. The terms have been negotiated with the current electric provider in the city, which is Dominion Virginia Power, and we do have three representatives this evening here to be able to make comments and answer your questions. The franchise agreement with Dominion actually has expired, and we've been operating under the previous terms. I believe that the terms before you that would be advertised are an improvement and would benefit the residents of the city. Some of the key terms, it's a 30-year term versus the earlier one, which was five years. It is for non-exclusive, so it would allow us, over time, to look at the changing electricity environment, and if there's alternative methods of delivery, we have some opportunities for partnership. The undergrounding benefit has been improved from a simple circuit linear feat provided per year, where Dominion pays a portion, and the duct banks and the heavy equipment is covered by the city, to an option for a hybrid, where Dominion would do a turnkey project. We'd have less linear feet, but we'd actually get a project delivered, and we would have the ability to choose that over the franchise terms. As you can see, there's also some items for approving moving lines. If we're doing a project, they may not be undergrounded, but the poles could be moved at Dominion's cost. And for emergency work, 96 hours after the emergency work, like a derecho or Sandy, we would get a report of the work that was done in the city. And we've also improved the right-of-way permitting process, which would be the coordination with Public Works for regular maintenance and construction, but also tree trimming notifications. The bonding amount is increased from $10,000 to $50,000, and if used, would be replenished so we'd always have the full amount of the bond. And one thing, several of the new things that I've identified are also different and things that just the City of Falls Church is benefiting from, and one of those is a service, service level agreement. Over the last five years, six years, we've really worked to enhance our collaboration and partnership with Dominion, and that has included some regular meetings on issues of mutual benefit for service delivery and increasing reliability. And so this agreement sort of formalizes that at minimum, once a year at the city's request, we'll have formal meetings and not just relying on the current goodwill of the folks that are working together. And that is a highlight of the key terms. The strategic undergrounding program that Mr. Duncan mentioned earlier is separate from the franchise agreement, because that is not undergrounding pursuant to the franchise agreement. It's a separate project that Dominion's operating for single-phase lines, for us predominantly residential. And as I mentioned, we have three representatives from Dominion here who might want to make just a brief comment, but are certainly available for questions. Highlighting brief, as I know we're all tired.
Yeah, I'm not sure we need to have any comments unless you feel compelled to, but otherwise, why don't we get, see if there's any questions or comments from council? And then we'll call for public comment. Mr. Duncan?
Just the flip side of the question I asked the Cox folks. So I understand the strategic undergrounding program was presented at a meeting of the Village Preservation Society a couple of weeks ago. So in our jurisdiction, is there a reasonable expectation that Dominion might be able to work with Cox and other folks who have wires on poles to at least come back to us with some information about the potential for us to get those poles out of sight?
Sure. My name's Travis Cutler, External Affairs Representative with Dominion. Good evening. I know it's late. I'll try and be brief.
Good morning.
Thank you for, yeah. Thank you for the question, Councilman Duncan. As mentioned previously, the legislative authority that we have been granted does only pertain to the electric distribution lines, the tap lines. We do maintain close cooperative relationships with the adjacent telecom utilities. Whenever there are undergrounding projects or pole relocation projects, we work closely to coordinate with them, to let them know what the statuses of our projects are, and if there is ever any opportunity to work together for cost savings, to, to sort of join in on any undergrounding or relocation projects, we try to do those. As far as the strategic underground program, there is nothing in the legislative approval for Dominion to move forward that would obligate or allow us to force the telecom utilities to, to join us in these underground adventures. It is basically at their discretion if they see added value in it, and it, they see it as being a cost-effective venture for themselves, then we will work with them to accommodate for the additional space in the underground easements. However, that's pretty much the extent of, of what we can do to, to allow them to work together with us on that.
So your easements that you get from property owners, does it allow you to share your utility easement with other providers, or is it just solely to Dominion Power?
The easements would only cover Dominion's facilities. However, in the process of doing the undergrounding work, we can make sure that there's additional space to accommodate future undergrounding of the other telecom utilities.
But they'd still need to get their own easements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other, Mr. Snyder?
Ms. Mester, several years ago, we met with Virginia Dominion Power regarding service during natural and man-made catastrophes to the city hall complex, including the community center. Can you give me an update, and have we seen some improvements?
And I'd welcome Travis to come back up. They did do a significant capital infrastructure project for the main feed that comes into the community center and city hall that was actually in the Arlington side around 66, and some tree trimming, and I can defer to them for the specifics, but since that time, Dominion has run reliability reports for us, and we've had zero major outages as a result of storms or emergency situations, and no even fluctuations.
So the bottom line is we've seen some significant improvement?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Baruch?
And thank you to, to Dominion Power people. We had some meetings in the midst of some serious natural catastrophes, and I think that it's, we've seen some, a very positive development out of that, so thank you.
There's also been additional capital infrastructure from other substations into the city, so we're seeing improvement, reliability for the residential and business community as well.
So just on, on the same note, Travis, I just wanted to welcome you back to Falls Church, like this time in a little bit better circumstances. I think the, the last time we met, circumstances were, shall we say, heated in a variety of ways. So to Vice Mayor Snyder's point, thank you, and, and thanks to Cindy and the whole city staff, and also Dominion for working on the improvements with the infrastructure. And again, it's my hope that we can continue to, to improve, especially on providing, you know, being receptive to critical infrastructures. We talked about before, the water system is no longer a direct issue and responsibility of the city, but as you continue to work with Fairfax, et cetera, and the water authority there, I hope that, that you keep those discussions on the same path. At least that would be our expectations is essentially consumers of the water from Fairfax Water and some of the issues that we faced, if you recall, during- if you recall, during the derecho, which Vice Mayor Snyder alluded to, and also our critical infrastructure, which includes our businesses, that can get pretty hard, hit pretty hard during these weather incidents. So if you can continue to work on those, I think would be greatly appreciated as we move forward, working with Cindy, and Cindy does give us periodic progress reports of what's happening when there are with weather incidents, so thank you both.
Thank you.
One last question, with respect to your undergrounding. I saw a presentation about it at the Northern Virginia Regional Commission. It was billed to us, or at least to me, at that meeting, that, you know, at least a decent portion of this was cosmetic. In other words, it was for reliability purposes in a lot of ways, but also that the lines would be coming down. It sounds like what I'm hearing is that when you underground the tap lines, or whatever you call your main lines, that it would sound to me like in a lot of instances, the lines don't, the poles don't come down, and the lines don't come down, it's just one line on the pole that comes down. Is that accurate?
That is, the existence of the poles beyond our infrastructure would really depend on whether we're sharing with other joint-use utilities, such as the telecom utilities. The objective of the program itself is reliability-focused, not aesthetics. So, you know, by transitioning those lines underground, you know, we expect to see a significant improvement in not only reliability, but also the speed of our restoration efforts in major outages. The aesthetics and the existence of aboveground infrastructure beyond our wires and our devices is really something that, as we said, it's going to be left to the other utilities to determine whether they want to pursue a similar type of program.
I can't imagine any other utility would voluntarily spend the extra funds to underground their lines. I mean, even though you're digging the trench, you're putting in the conduit, they still have to get to their, you know, box on the wall, or wherever it is they pop out of the ground for, and I'm sure there's decent expense for anybody else trying to underground their lines, isn't there?
I don't want to speak for the other utilities. I would assume there are additional costs. Whether it's worth it for them to pursue those, you know, it would be for them to answer. And, you know, certainly a large driving factor in our moving forward with this program is the ability to recover costs through SCC, what are called riders, which we will submit an application for to outline the future cost recovery of the program. So I would venture to guess that the other utilities would need some sort of similar cost recovery mechanism in order to really motivate them to move forward.
Yeah, I guess I would just say that as an elected official, this was positive, at least my understanding of it was, that part of it was cosmetic or aesthetic, and it seems to me that's probably very limited, if any, aesthetic improvement, given that most of the lines in a jurisdiction like Falls Church are going to be shared by multiple utility providers of all persuasions, and so I would guess very few lines in a place like Falls Church, very few poles are going to actually be coming down.
I can't speak to the exact number of poles. I do know that in our early feasibility studies, we're looking at roughly 1,200 customers, residential customers in the city of Falls Church, who would have their lines run underground, assuming they agree to the easements at those project locations, which is a little over a quarter of the metered locations here in the city. So, you know, I think we're looking at two different areas here, aesthetics and reliability. From a reliability standpoint, I think we'll see an appreciable difference.
Okay. Listen, unless there are any other questions, why don't we go ahead and have a motion? Go ahead and open this to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address this matter, speak to this matter?
Mayor Charter, if I could just make a quick comment. I do feel like our relationship with Dominion, because of the people in this room, is a very strong relationship, and it's one, I do want to just take the opportunity to thank you, Mr. Cutler, and thank you to all of our Dominion professional staff. We do have a history here of taking problems to Dominion and Dominion responding, and that's what you ask for, and that's what Dominion has been able to do. We will always have additional requests and want to do more work with you, but I think I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for what we have been able to accomplish, what you've been able to accomplish, and look forward to continuing that.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant T L 15-10, first reading scheduled receipt of bids, public hearing in second reading for August 10th, 2015, advertise and invite bids for the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, thanks for sticking around, we appreciate it.
Thank you, council, and we'll be back on August 10th, and the brochure is from Dominion on the strategic undergrounding program that we were just discussing.
On to the next matter. Madam Clerk, will you call the next item?
I believe that's consent item.
We have just one item on consent, and that is authorization for the city manager on behalf of the city to issue a purchase order with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling in an amount up to $1,45,132 plus contingencies, as allowed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, to award the Southwest Street Roadbed Reconstruction Project. This project was approved by the city council over 18 months ago, within a contract award to Arthur Construction. We are bringing this back to council now to authorize us to move to use a different company to do the work. The cost difference is about $18,000 between the two, and with the Finley contract, above what the original contract was. However, we'll be using a method that we believe is a method that will be speedier, will provide a better result for the neighborhood that will be impacted by the project, and will produce a comparable product in terms of the durability of the road. And so we ask for this authorization to extend this purchase contract. If there are any questions about it, Mr. Collins is here, our Public Works Director, and he's been working very hard to get this project going. We do acknowledge the fact that there have been delays, and we believe that by shifting to Finley, we'll be able to address those. There would be, if this contract is approved, there'll be work pretty much immediately on some of the replacement of stormwater pipes in the street. The paving work, however, would then start just after Labor Day. We had wanted to get this work done in the summer, but instead it would be done in the fall, just after Labor Day.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Just, I'm sorry, they're at the tail end, so we start, we vote tonight, and what starts tomorrow?
There'll be work basically tomorrow on the stormwater piece of it, very preliminary tomorrow.
I didn't literally mean tomorrow, but I mean soon.
Actually, we had originally planned that it would start tomorrow, and they will be out on site this week, digging in the ground. We expect to start on Monday.
Okay, so public information about that through the usual channels will go out and so forth?
We're hoping to release a news blast tomorrow morning.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments, questions, anyone in the public wishes to address this matter? Seeing none, matter is closed to public comment? Any other comments from council, questions?
Just a quick question for the city attorney. You recommend that we take this action, is that right?
Yes, I do.
Is there any potential liability as a result of it?
There, there's potential liability only in that if the contractor who had a task order before decided to complain, but I think we're fairly well protected against that. And I also understand that they have, that Arthur Construction doesn't have any interest in doing the work at this point, so I don't think that will become an issue. But because we are changing contractors, obviously there's some room in there for there to be some small problem.
But you're recommending that we take this action?
I am, because I believe this is the best way to get the work done, and I don't think there's going to be a problem arising from it.
Thank you.
Just on that note, and this meets the requirements?
It does. What this, what this is, is the city has task order contracts with three contractors, including Arthur Construction, Finley, and Virginia Paving, and so this is really just a task order under an existing contract that was, that went through all the competitive procedures. So there's not a need for an independent process here, because we're just issuing a new task order, essentially.
Okay, is there a motion?
Do we just need to move approval of consent calendar, or do I need to specifically read it?
This is the consent calendar.
Okay, so, you want me to read the whole thing?
Whatever you.
Sure. I move the city council authorize the city manager on behalf of the city to amend an existing contract with Finley Asphalt and Ceiling in an amount up to $1,45,132 plus contingencies, as allowed by the Virginia Public Procurement Act, to award the Smith Southwest Street Roadbed Reconstruction Project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's the second?
Ms. Oliver?
No, it was Ms. Conley.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't you call the roll call?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, I'd just like to note for the record that I am a resident of Southwest Street, but I am a member of a class of three or more persons who will be affected by this, and I can participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Thank you. Would you want a copy of that disclosure, Madam Clerk, for your records?
That's fine, either way.
Okay. Why don't we call the roll call vote, or why don't you call the roll call?
Sure. Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Charter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, I don't see on the agenda the minutes, but do we have some minutes to approve?
Oh, yeah, they're on number 14.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They made it to the third page.
Okay, my apologies. So why don't we ask Ms. Conley about the closed session? Do you want to do this now, or do that at a later time?
It's 11:30, I'm wide awake, but I'm going to leave it up to everyone else, shall we? We will not do our closed session this evening. We will do our closed session next Monday at 7:00 PM in the Oak Room.
Okay.
Okay.
In the Oak Room, yes. I reserved that for you, yes.
Yes. So that is when we do that closed session. That means everyone needs to be prepared with their materials and comments, because we will have exactly 35 minutes to get through all that material. So I'm happy to meet with any of you in intervening week to discuss what we have.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to go ahead and defer that discussion. Is there any business not on the agenda? Any council member comments? Mr. Burke?
I have just one quick report. In my personal capacity, I had the opportunity to speak on a panel for the Truman Conference. It's essentially, it's a gathering of former Truman scholars that happens every two weeks. And if you're not familiar with the Truman Scholarship, it's a scholarship that's awarded to undergraduates who have a dedicated interest in public service and have shown outstanding leadership. It's essentially a domestic roads type of scholarship that provides funding for grad work in public interest, and I'm now one of the older scholars, I have to admit, being in a room full of young whippersnappers. And the panel that I was on was on a panel entitled "Elected Officials," so there was a series of local officials, I was serving as one of the local officials, state, et cetera, and it was just fascinating, and it was a great honor to represent, well, I wasn't formally representing the city of Falls Church, but I got to talk about local Falls Church issues, and what municipal government's all about, and trying to get a lot of folks interested in municipal issues, and there was a lot of, lot of interest, so it was great to see a whole cohort, if you will, of young folks, or certainly younger than I was, maybe a few that were older than me, getting interested in local elected politics. So it was great to see, especially with a group that had sort of been traditionally focused on just policy and not necessarily electoral issues. So I was very glad that I could attend that, but just wanted to let you guys know and let the citizens know that I had the opportunity to kind of do a little bit of a plug for Falls Church and really talk about what municipal government's all about, so I hope I did my duties there.
Thank you, thank you for the update, sounds interesting. Are there any other council member comments?
Just, Mr. Manager, I wanted to follow up there after the meeting about a construction site maintenance issue on North Oak Street, 604, our foundation, collecting water, and what's being done to remediate that, and do we have sort of maintenance of site standards that, you know, apply to all construction, specifically this one in this instance?
We do, and we'll send inspectors out, either on a complaint basis, but they also make the rounds, and will, if there's a messy site, or certainly if there's soil and erosion problems, we're generally pretty quick on those. So I will raise the concern about this site and pass it on terms.
I think that maybe the staff has paid a visit in the interim since it was brought to my attention in this meeting, so let's just talk for a minute about it after the meeting, but.
Okay. Are there any other, okay.
I'd just like to note that the Budget and Finance Committee meeting will not meet tomorrow night, however, the Government Operations Committee will meet at lunchtime tomorrow in the Oak Room.
Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request that at an upcoming work session, we receive a report on the status of the Mount Daniel Project. We heard again, issues raised, I'd like to try to get to the bottom of any issues, if there are there, and I think it's incumbent upon us to engage in some oversight, so I'm interested in receiving just the status of that project, where it is, what, are there any issues that we need to deal with? And I'm also aware that we may need to reach out to the neighborhood over the next few months, so I want to see just basically where that project is and what more the council ought to be doing, if that's agreeable to people. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, at the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority meeting on Thursday, which was a short and non-controversial meeting, at the end, the Commonwealth Transportation Board member talked about NVTA putting itself on record in support of additions to the American Legion Bridge, as well as endorsing a further western bridge over the Potomac River. These issues are extremely loaded politically, and there's supposed to be a draft letter that will be circulated among NVTA members, and I would just like to include all the council and get any comments you have about what our positions ought to be on that. Frankly, it came as a total surprise to me, and it's one thing to talk about the American Legion Bridge and expanding it and improving it, and it's an altogether another thing to talk about another river crossing. And then, of course, all of this would require interest on the part of the state of Maryland, which owns the American, which controls the American Legion Bridge up to the Virginia shore. So it's being posited as requesting an initial discussion with the state of Maryland, but there are a lot of longstanding agendas that are playing out on this issue, so just wanted folks to be aware, and it seems to me that everyone ought to be aware of this and have an opportunity to look at the draft letter, and we can also bring it up at a work session if we have time to do that, if people would like. So that's what I had to report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baruch.
Thanks. If I can also make one other request to be added to a work session that I had previously made during the budget season, and that was to figure out what our maximum allowable provisions are under Virginia law for tax relief programs. So I'd like to revisit that issue now, rather than later, certainly well, well in advance of the tax, or I'm sorry, well advanced of the budget season, so if we can try to do that during the summer, when things start easing up a little bit, at least have time to think about it in a deliberative way and figure out what the costs are with putting new programs in place, so. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Why don't we go to the next item, the approval of the minutes? Does anyone have any comments to the minutes? If not, why don't we have a motion to approve, or have a motion regarding the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council April 13th, 2015.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll call vote?
Mr. Baruch?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
And Mayor Charter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Is there any other business, Ms. Oliver?
Could I just ask that the chairs of Budget and Finance, the EDC, and appointments clarify whether we will meet at the end of August or whether we will be on recess? Not tonight, but in an email, please.
Okay. Anything else?
Why don't you and I talk at some point? When you get to the.
Okay. Okay. Next week, we've got our joint meeting with Vienna, town of Vienna.
So you won't get an agenda packet? You'll just be doing your closed session and then, is that correct?
That's correct. We're planning to have dinner here in council chambers around this table. Bob Lozaro and Mark Gibb and others with NVRC and the Solarise Program will join us for the dinner with Vienna, and so it'll be a good celebration of the program and the milestones we've crossed with that program. And then we plan to also have some discussion about some of our planning activity. Jim Snyder will talk about air planning activities here, and I think we'll hear from Vienna about their bike and PED planning there and Vienna. And so there's just some, a little bit of substance to talk about during the dinner as well. If there are other things that you would like to have on the discussion agenda, send us an email, and we'll try to get prepped for them. Should be a fun evening.
Who won the bet?
We're all winners. We're all winners.
I hear.
Last thing, the mayor's meeting with Mr. Shields is out of town, so I would just propose maybe we'll just skip this one unless, Ms. Messner, you have a.
Record.
Okay. Unless there's anybody who has an interest in it, I maybe, we'll just go ahead and not have a mayor's meeting this Wednesday with, I think the Vienna thing is going to eat up a lot of the time, so. Anyway, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I oppose, abstentions, yes, have it. Good evening.